Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is June 15, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Cosden.
As we gather today to discuss the business of the city of Cape Coral, we are seeking the highest guidance in making wise choices. Let us make our decisions based on truth. Love is the true motive of our work. Let's have the good of every citizen of Cape Coral in mind as we go forward with malice toward none. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Long has asked to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Or do we have a motion to approve as adopted?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Tate?
Tate, thank you. I would like to move the agenda, but I would like to ask the council to make a change in item D2, which is the Lee County Department of Transportation. If we can move that up to after citizens' input, and if I can get an agreement, then I'll approve the agenda.
Okay, and also we have Mr. City Managers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to call to your attention, staff would like to withdraw item number eight from-- we'd like to pull item number eight from the consent agenda.
Okay. Item eight. And you mean pull for a discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So for now, the major change is the moving the nine D2, I believe it was, with a bridge discussion up to directly after citizens' input. Do we have a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item six is recognitions and achievements. I think we have three tonight. The first one is the presentation to the city employees for exceeding expectations and receiving a mayor's recognition certificate tonight. I'd like to recognize several of our city employees from various departments who played a significant role and supported the Dedicated Backlog Reduction Task Force here a few months ago. The task force was implemented with the primary goal of mitigating the backlog of building permits. To put in perspective, the task force worked from Saturday, April 9, through Sunday, April 17. And during this timeframe, the customer service team processed 4,848 permit applications and issued 2,059 permits. Additionally, they worked longer hours, almost 12 hours a day for that nine-day period and continuously through the weekend. And in addition to the permit applications and the permits that were issued, they processed 2,214 single paper documents and returned over 300 calls, as well as 1,500 emails. I personally want to thank each of them for their hard work, dedication that they took out-- and the time that they took out of their busy schedules in the evenings and on the weekends to come in and help our city with this particular task. They also took time away from their families during this enormous undertaking, and I want to thank the families at will that, you know, had taken time from their loved ones so they could come in for that nine-day period. So thank you to the families as well. So at that time, I'm going to ask-- I'm going to come down to give the certificates out, and I'm going to ask Madam City Clerk to please read the names of the recipients who are currently in the audience. And when your name is called, please come up, receive your award, and please stand behind-- in front of the podium here behind me until everyone comes forward, and we'll take a group picture. Thank you.
Stacy Di Giacomo. Troy Watson. Abel Mendoza. Carrie Caletta. Carla Asensio. Jean Rose. Jennifer Esterlein. Joshua Larson. Krenda Nankaro. Peter Kachanowski. Richard Delfino. Sherry Rhine. Taylor McLean. Bogdan Cernik. Christopher Galt. Keaton Patterson. Mark Kissinger. Nathaniel Woodhull. Patrick Mercado. Stephen Popopski. Malagros Rosario. Brienne Cherry. Okay, we're good.
Madam City Clerk, could you also please read the name of the recipients who are unable to attend today's presentation? Because we want to make sure that we recognize and thank them as well.
Christopher Weir. Jennifer Shangrall. Matthew Dick. Michelle A. Miller. Tammy Whitaker. Teresa Little. Anthony Dendis. Rebecca Swift. Damaris Ismael. Diego Manzano. Ernest Bartlett. Joseph L. Marconi. Talia Curtis. Mari Hernandez. Diane Oliver. Ben Allen Dunsworth. Nicole Bicklehop. Heather Perron. Kimberly Trotta. Joe Gonzalez. Allison Silver. Elizabeth Sawtell. Vanessa Zaberna. Diego Manzana. And that concludes the list.
Thank you again. Thank you for all their hard work and dedication that they helped us with in this one particular endeavor. So thank you again. Next item on the agenda, 6B, is Florida Water Environmental Association, the Earl B. Phelps Award for Outstanding Waste Water Treatment Facility Performance, which was a first-place award for the Cape Coral Southwest Water Reclamation Facilities. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, your Utilities Director, Mr. Jeff Pearson, is not-- was not able to be here with us today. So I'm going to ask our Principal Engineer, Bill Sperry, to come to the podium and introduce our guest and tell you a little bit more about this award. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Bill Sperry. I'm with the Utilities Administration, and it's my privilege to introduce Ron Cavallari with the Florida Water Environment Association. He's going to present the Earl B. Phelps Award, and he is the immediate past President of the FWEA and is also a member of the Board of Directors. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ron Cavallari.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. FWEA is a professional organization and a member association of the Water Environment Federation. Our vision is to have a clean and sustainable water environment for Florida's future generations. The mission of our organization is dedicated to promoting clean and sustainable water environment by supporting and uniting members through public-- with the public through public awareness and outreach. FWEA and WEF believe that individuals and groups should be recognized for their meritorious achievements in our industry. And each year, awards are given out in a variety of categories, recognizing both individuals and organizations. And so the Earl B. Phelps Award is given out for outstanding wastewater treatment plant performance. And FWA gives the Phelps Award annually to recognize wastewater treatment facilities, which have maintained the highest removal of major pollution-causing constituents prior to discharging treated effluent-receiving waters. And for the past several years, FWA has given out awards for advanced wastewater treatment plants, advanced secondary wastewater treatment plants, and secondary treatment plants. At this year's Florida Water Resources Conference, the city of Cape Coral was awarded first place in the advanced secondary category. The Southwest Water Reclamation Facility is a 15-MGD, advanced secondary water reclamation facility that uses-- and forgive the technical terms, but uses an anaerobic, anoxic aerobic treatment process along with bioline and numerous process control improvements to control the wastewater process and consistently produce high-quality effluent. So the main purpose of the treatment process is to remove nitrogen and phosphorus from the wastewater, those pollution-causing constituents. And then in 2021, the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility averaged a total nitrogen of 4.1 milligrams per liter in the wastewater-- the treated wastewater. And the city can be very proud to have such outstanding utility leadership and operations staff at this award-winning facility. And not just this year, this is the trifecta. This is the third year in a row that the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility has received the Phelps Award from FWA. So the city can be very proud of its staff and the operations staff at that facility. The facility performs all work in-house, such as complete aeration basin diffuser replacement and completely redesigning the plant's SCADA system. So it is my great honor and pleasure to present the Phelps Award to the city of Cape Coral.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to staff for their hard work, their dedication, and setting that level of expectation very high. And as a result of that, that's what-- the reason why we get these awards each and every year. So just want to thank the Utility Department, the leadership of Mr. Pearson, and everyone involved. So thank you. Okay, the next recognition and achievement is 6C, which is Fleet's Top 100 Presentation. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, another good news story here. Once again, the city has been recognized for outstanding performance, and this particular area happens to deal with fleet management services. And so I'm going to ask your Public Works Director, Mike Ilchisen, to come to the podium and give you a little bit more information and detail on this specific award. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchisen, Public Works Director. The city of Cape Coral Fleet Services welcomes its ranking as 100 Best Fleets in America by the National Association of Fleet Administrators. NAFSA is the world's largest association for individuals who manage vehicular fleet and mobility responsibility and includes over 2,000 fleet manager members, encompassing corporations, public safety, education, and government agencies alike. The program is open to all public fleets in North and South America, and the 100 Best Fleets program is designed to recognize peak-performing fleets, ranking only the top 100 of over 2,000 members. Cape Coral this year ranked 30, rising above larger competitors like the city of Tallahassee, Florida, Phoenix, Arizona, and New York City's fleet in the city of New York. What is most impressive about this and what is not in the write-up that we put in the backup is this is the seventh year in a row that our Fleet Service Department Division in the city of Cape Coral has ranked in the top 100. And it's the fifth year in a row we've been in the top 50 in the entire NAFSA Association. We striving to be number one, but until we get to our facility and can really close that loop on all of our operations, I think we're going to be in the top 50 until we get to that point. But I would like to recognize the staff here with me to give them a plaque. I believe AJ's here with Gary and Tracy.
I'd like to recognize all Fleet staff, their hard work and dedication. Like our Public Works Director, Mr. Ilchisen stated, this is the seventh year in a row. That's not by accident. That's because of hard work and dedication, setting that high level of expectation on themselves. So congratulations and thank you. Item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting of May 20, 2022?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from a special meeting also on May 20, 2022, which was the attorney-client session?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of June 1, 2022?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, the citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Anyone who wants to participate in citizens' input. There's one opportunity for the three minutes. Will be utilized in the podium to my left in front of the double doors. Go ahead, sir, when you're ready.
Good evening. How are you? My name's Mark Harper. I live in Northwest Cape. And we had been in for a couple of meetings now trying to get our boat ramp taken care of. We had received an email from Congressman Long, and we're just trying to figure out a timeframe as to when we can expect to possibly be able to get these boats out of the water from behind our house. The city does have a ramp there, but it's still unusable. It's chained off, and they do have a big ditch across the front of it. So even if they were willing to let us get the boats out, it's still unusable. It hasn't been completed yet as of this time.
Thank you, sir. And we'll have-- we'll have staff respond before we're finished.
Hi, my name is Nancy DeVille. I'm also here about the Northwest 25th Street ramp, on behalf of my neighbors as well. We were told that we could use the ramp in emergency purposes once, like Mark said, once it's complete. But we don't know. They said to contact Public Works. Is there a contact, somebody we can specifically call to get-- because nobody-- when we do reach out to Public Works, nobody responds, and nobody gets back to us. So I mean, we're not thinking we're going to have much luck getting our boats out if we have an emergency. So we need some answers.
Sure, we'll get those answers for you. So just make sure after citizens' input, you stand by, and I'm sure someone from staff will get with you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Lou Navara, perennial resident of Cape Coral. I'm-- I was impressed with these achievements. And applause is nice, but let's give these people a 15% raise. We've got inflation at 8.6. The Federal Reserve raised rates that hadn't been raised that high in 20 years. Now, I think that would be nice. I really do. So that's my recommendation. Now, moving along, COVID-19, I asked them to place that up there. I wanted to tell you that the board wished it away at the school board. So at least you have some antiseptic here, because it's not gone. And if you look, it's coming back, and it's BA2, highly contagious. So, you know, I have no problem with people not wearing masks, but you need to be aware of it. The mask protects you, not me. So last night, I was talking to the board, the charter schools. I've sent you all a message on that, and if we can put that up there. The Dade County took that to court. And I'm surprised, because you all love to take court cases here and spend tons of our taxpayers' dollars. But they won, and it's the exact same thing that the Lee County School Board did to us. Now, I'm hoping that you're going to change your mind and get our share. You know? You raised our electric tax, and you shouldn't have done that. I told you. I've been working. Now, January-- I'm sorry, June 23 will be the meeting of the Half-Cent Regressive Tax Committee. And my friend Joe Mazurkowitz will be there. And we need to work with that man, and we need to get our money and rescind the money back to these poor people that-- 500 kilowatts, they told me at LCEC that people actually live on it. And, you know, you're making mistakes. And hopefully, we'll start to move forward. I have a little gift for the council tonight. I know we can't mention you by name. First Amendment, though. In meetings, we call everybody by name at school board, et cetera. It's the Constitution. I want the mayor and the council to have it. It's my last one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jasper went to sleep. He's heard all this baloney before, huh? Come on, little boy.
My name is Carl Loa, I live at 3705 Southeast Third Place. I come before the council, this is a quote from the FWC, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission is accepting funding proposals for habitat protection benefits for the state threatened burrowing owl. Up to $875,000 is available from the Fish and Wildlife Foundation of Florida to fund land acquisitions and conservation easements benefits for the burrowing owls. We'd like to meet with the City Council Association on getting this grant. The $595,000 of this grant comes from the burrowing owl mitigation, where someone collapses a bro in Cape Coral, it goes into a fund for this trust, and $595,000, as I said before, of this 875,000 grant comes directly from mitigation funds from Cape Coral's burrowing owl mitigation. And what I'm briefly asking the council to do is to ask for a meeting with the Cape Coral City, the Friends of Cape Coral Wildlife, and the FWC, and a meeting to see if we can get this grant. It has to be done by July 15th, because that's the deadline of the grant, which we're receiving soon, and maybe Cheryl Anderson can continue?
I'm Renee Sheal. I'm a 30-year resident of Cape Coral, been here several times about my storm drain seawall issue. I got a letter from the city after Wendy Williams and a worker from Williams Brothers came out. Apparently, he measured the wall and said he probed the ground, which consisted of putting a four-foot piece of rebar in about four or five holes, looking for, wanting to find the empty storm drain that I have a picture of that the city left buried under my ground. It's never been recorded taking out of the ground. There's been two, a total of three failures, two previous ones the city fixed. The city is just neglecting and doing ill repairs, and I called the city managers, because I came up with a timeline with Mike Israelshim of the events. They're not looking at any of my evidence, my witnesses, my Foster's engineering report. I called two weeks ago to meet with the city manager and still have not heard back from them. I want my voice heard, and this is an ongoing issue. They said they're going to line the pipe, but the whole panel that the storm drain comes out of is ready to blow out. It's not going to make it through this season. And, you know, they're saying, there's piece of rebar going through the storm drain, they're calling it a pin. They're trying to minimize things by writing certain things. But I would really like to go over this timeline and stuff that was not presented, evidence that I have, that's never been presented in the timeline. So I would really like a meeting with the city manager. This has been going on almost five years. And then, you know, there was two previous incidents. The second repair took me close to four years to get fixed. So, you know, it's like, I've been a resident here a long time, and I deserve some kind of explanation. If you're not going to, if you feel you're not responsible for fixing anything, that nothing's wrong, I want to put in writing, every grievance I have, I want answered and put in writing.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Cheryl Anderson, Board of Directors of the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife and the Cape Coral Wildlife Trust. Could you put up the picture of the owl? I think the Mayor and Councilwoman Tate know this picture. This picture just won first place in the Burrowing Owl Photo Contest, so I'm just going to put it up there while I talk about the value of burrowing owls, okay? Over the past couple of weeks, we've had two front-page articles in the local news press about the owls, about the census that we just had in the city. Burrowing owls are a big draw to this city. Eco-tourism is a big issue, but the city really doesn't have a designated burrowing owl area. So as Carl mentioned, and because of Carl's insistence, the Florida Wildlife Commission has created a grant, 875,000, that we can apply for to get burrowing owl property in the City of Cape Coral. We propose a burrowing owl preserve using this money that the city has already paid in. $600,000 has come from the City of Cape Coral to mitigate for burrowing owls. So this money is there, and we have finally got a way to get it to benefit the owls. Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife, who's been operating for over 20 years, now has 500 members, 500 people who care about the burrowing owl in the City of Cape Coral. We also had more than 150 volunteers cruise the entire city two weeks ago, and the reporter from the news press rode with my husband and I doing the owl census. So there is a lot of interest in the burrowing owl here, and I think the city disregards the great value that this serves the city as an eco-tourism destination. So what we want, if you could put up that other piece of paper for me, is we want a meeting with the city, the Florida Wildlife Commission, and the Cape Coral Wildlife Trust to see how we can facilitate to apply for this grant, to get the money, to have a burrowing owl preserve and burrowing owl land, designated land in the City of Cape Coral. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yana Sharvat. I'm also on the Cape Coral Wildlife Trust, work with Cheryl and Carl, and we've been working on this grant for a while, and we're just asking for the cooperation of the city to work with us on this grant. It's an opportunity for us to have an owl preserve, for people to enjoy this treasure that we have, that we don't realize people come from all over the world to see our burrowing owls. And to pass on the possibility for the city to get this grant of 875,000, to be able to purchase properties to create this preserve, is what we're working towards. And all we're asking for is the city to work with us to see if that's a possibility that we could get this grant. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Mr. Hernandez, I'm James Collier, I'm the Chair of your Waterway Advisory Board, and tonight you have on your agenda to appoint a replacement for a potential vacancy. We have a member that wants to retire from the board. You have three applicants, one is Jeff Matty, one is Mike McGruder, and one is Dan Carney. I've had the chance to get to know all of these fellows a little bit, Mr. McGruder and Mr. Carney, more so than Mr. Matty. And I can tell you a couple of things that are not apparent from their resumes or their applications. Mr. McGruder is a very experienced boater, who has had several different kinds of boats over his lifetime, and you won't be able to get boating out of his life. He is addicted, as many of us are. He is primarily, I would say, a pleasure boater, and has a couple of boats here in Cape Coral. He's been in Cape Coral for a short number of years and has committed to build a new house here, has done it and occupied it. Two of his boats are at his house. Mr. Carney is a different kind of boater. He is, both of these gentlemen were raised around boats and very committed to them. Mr. Carney is a trailer boater and operates off a trailer with a small fishing vessel and is pretty committed to that. I see Mr. Carney at some of the water meetings that I attend for clean water services and that sort of thing. And I also know that he is knowledgeable about the water issues that we've had over the past several years, having owned a home here for quite a while, Mr. Carney has, in the same home. The thing I would tell you about these two individuals, they're both pretty studious. When I hear from these, that an application's been filed, I try to contact those folks and urge them to take a look at some of the agendas, the backup material, and the memo that we circulated last year, and both of these gentlemen did that. I was able to talk with Mr. Matty only by telephone and by text, and I know him a little bit through the Power Squadron. He's a very intelligent guy, retired military, and is presently touring Portugal, I told him to have a great time. So I know that you'll pick a good opportunity, a good person to fill this opportunity. It is a vacancy that's going to end at the end of the year, along with all the other appointments on the board, so you'll have a bunch of people before you at the end of the year. I appreciate the chance to serve the city.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public input, please come forward.
Council members, Mayor. I'm Jim Fintris, I'm now a resident of Cape Coral seven years or so. I've rowed everywhere, and I'm here to talk about the rowing club, and "club" is a misnomer, it's a congregation or a group. Anyway, I'm an Oregon migrant, we were looking for a place for me to retire and row. Cape Coral was ranked number three in the nation, and why is that? Because of the waterway, specifically the south and the north spreaders. They're wide enough to host the larger boats, the real estate here has been very affordable, so we made the move. And that was, we explored eight years ago, seven years ago, we committed. So I've served with the rowing club as a president and treasurer, webmaster, I've been a jack-of-all-trades for the club. But what I want to mention is the why and the wherefore of the spreaders. They're fairly unique to Cape Coral. I, like I say, I've rowed everywhere on the west coast. I've been rowing since I was 50, and that's a little over 20 years. So I've rowed everywhere on the west coast, almost every venue, rowed several of the central U.S. venues and several of the east coast venues. We've had the world championships right up the street in Sarasota, we got to compete there, and we've shown well for the city. There's, the club, or the club, Cape Coral Rowing Club is one of the best-kept secrets of Cape Coral. It's very good for fitness, it's good for adults, as you saw two weeks ago, it's good for the kids. I personally would like to see the parks and rec and the school system better engaged with the rowing. It's a fantastic sport, it's one that even if you're not big and strong, you can be a coxswain and get on board when you go to college, you can be a walk-on. So anyway, it's an opportunity for somebody that's not basketball height or football size, but it's a unique kind of sport and extremely good for fitness. Anybody that wants to learn from a former world champion, come on down, we'll show you how to do it. I've got some of the best rowers in Florida here that I'm part of.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? See, a non-citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Tate.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Navara, thank you for bringing that information. I don't think this council did give up, and we are working, I know the mayor has met with the superintendent, and we are working towards that, so I appreciate you doing the homework. Mr. Ilchizan, could you please share your contact information with these residents that have been coming to the meetings? And I don't know why you all can't get ahold of him, because he is one of the most accessible people I've ever met. So I will make sure that you have his card this evening, and see if we can get that under control. And I believe that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, in response to what the Cape Coral Wildlife Group brought forward in terms of a joint grant, are you able, or is someone from staff, maybe Matt, able to meet with them, to work with them on it? I met with them previously before council, and it's my understanding they need, they need a partnership between us, Florida Fish and Wildlife, and their nonprofit.
So, Councilmember, my understanding is that our staff has been meeting with representatives in the community on this specific grant, and those individuals include representatives from my office, including the Assistant City Manager and our Special Projects Coordinator. We have been looking at the various steps that are, that need to be undertaken as part of this grant, and that includes identifying parcels that are suitable for a potential purchase to be funded by this grant. The problem is, we just don't have enough time. My understanding is that the initial grant seminal deadline was May 15th, it was then extended to June 15th, and I think we just heard today that it's been extended until July. But there's a series of steps that we are required to undertake, and notably is to identify those properties and get a willing seller to agree to sell their property, to, in order for us to submit that property under this grant. In addition, this grant is going to require some perpetual maintenance responsibilities of city government. I don't know what those responsibilities are, and since there is a fiscal impact to the city, before I make any recommendation moving forward with this grant, I need to know clearly what those future costs and responsibilities are of us, and I need to bring that forward to you, either as an agenda item or part of the budget process, so we ensure that we build in whatever additional dollars we need to ensure that these properties are properly maintained in perpetuity, which is the requirement of the grant. So we have been in contact with the state, and even though that we may not be able to meet this funding cycle, I understand the money is still available and will continue to be available. The state has asked us for specific feedback on how they can make this grant program even better and perhaps more flexible for the City of Cape Coral. Our staff has provided the state with input on how to make this program better, and so we believe that this money will be available in the near future for us to pursue, but at the moment, we are not prepared to pursue it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I address one additional point that was brought up with-
May I, may I address one additional point that was brought up with regard to the boat ramps?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. As I think we explained on June 1st, that currently your land development code does not allow for us to provide public access at several of these government access boat ramps. However, as part of the budget discussion that we had just last week, we mentioned to the council that we are, we do expect to bring a, an amendment to the land development code when you return from your summer recess. So, we can have the appropriate legal authority to open up those properties for public access. In addition, you have directed staff to include in the upcoming budget for fiscal year '23, funding so we can move forward with the improvements that are necessary in order to accommodate the public at five locations, I believe it was, yes, five locations located throughout the city. So, we are moving forward with that. Does that mean that, you know, we're going to open up the ramps tomorrow? No. However, you have taken the, the necessary steps and provided the necessary direction to ensure that those ramps will be available sometime in the, in the near future for public access. Thank you.
And a couple of things I wanted to mention quickly. Mr. Navara brought up the lawsuit over, I believe on the east coast. Just to let you know, I did forward that to our city attorney's office to have their office take a look at that and respond back to council with any recommendations or to see if it's a viable option to take a look at that any further. As far as Ms. Shields who came in reference to the seawall, I've been here about four and a half years now, I guess, and we've, we've went through this process with her for the last four and a half years. It's my understanding, Mr. City Manager, that we had recently formalized a response and sent that to her in a letter. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. And in addition to that, we have been visiting her property as a result of the complaints that she has alleged. We have spent considerable amount of time in discussions with her, conducting various inspections, most recently, I think, within the last 60 days or so, again, hiring a independent seawall contractor to come out there and do a comprehensive inspection of the condition of, of the seawall and also to try to determine if there is this elusive stormwater pipe that is alleged to be there. And my understanding is that yet again, our inspections reveal that the seawall is structurally sound and there is no pipe. So, at this point, we feel, we feel that we have exhausted everything that we can possibly do and that there is nothing else that the city can do at this point. And that, that's all I have to say on that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we'll move on. I know we moved up item 9D2. And that topic of discussion is the Cape Coral Bridge discussion. So, I will turn that over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce Deputy County Manager Dave Harner and his staff to come up to, to the podium and give you a brief presentation on their plans to replace the Cape Coral Bridge. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you for coming today.
Good afternoon. My name's Tom Shaw. I work for Kissinger Camplin Associates and I'm the Design Project Manager for the Cape Coral Bridge Project. We've prepared a brief presentation to give you a status update of where we're at and give you an idea of where we're going, but I just wanted to preface everything. We are very preliminary, what you see here. We're two months into a 48-month process, but this just will give you a snapshot of where we're at today. This project, the beginning of the project, it starts at the intersection of Del Prado Boulevard and Cape Coral Parkway, extends all the way over the Cluseahatchee River and to the intersection of College Parkway and McGregor Boulevard, a total length of approximately 2.3 miles. The purpose and need for this project, it's a safety project, it's a capacity project. Here you can see over the, the five-year crash analysis, there's been about 334 crashes. The red dots indicate the number of crashes where they were located. And currently, we are at a level of service F with the four-lane section. It is failing from a capacity section. Bringing this to a six-lane section will bring it up to an acceptable level of service D. And we're working towards the state's vision zero concept, towards zero fatalities and serious injuries being our goal. We've broken this project, just for your, your convenience, into six different segments or sections. I'm going to walk you through each of them individually and covering the, the key issues at each of these segments, beginning at the Del Prado Boulevard intersection. Currently, this intersection is failing. It's got a level of service F, significant vehicle delays. And at the design year of 2045, that delay time significantly increases. We've got heavy AM and PM traffic movements and constrained right-of-way. So, some of the proposed improvements here, we're looking at providing triple-left turns from the southbound to eastbound, dual westbound to northbound right-turn lanes, dual eastbound to northbound left-turn lanes, three-through lanes, and we're going to be providing crosswalks at each of these intersections. This will bring the, at the design year, the intersection operating at a level of service D and significantly reducing the delay time through this intersection. And here you can see a rendering of what this intersection could possibly look like when this design and construction is complete. Moving onward to Section 2, the Cape Coral Parkway on the west side, critical issues here. We have the continuity of the typical section going from Del Prado all the way to the bridge. We're going from four to six lanes through here, but we've also got access management issues constrained right-of-way. We've got a lack of pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. Here you can see the typical section of what we would propose there, three 11-foot lanes. Notice the two-way left-turn lane has been removed. Just, I've got constrained right-of-way. We're barrier separated through here, and we would provide 10-foot multi-use trails on both sides of the alignment here. As I, because I'm barrier separated here, there is no opportunity for the, the residents in these condominiums to make that left turn without providing this U-turn movement that you see here in the Bernice Brayden Park. And I'll show you another view of that here in a minute. We are, the critical issues here, we needed to, well, as I get into the Bernice Brayden Park, we have the, this is the area where we're going to be providing or requiring right-of-way to provide that U-turn movement. We're going to make sure we avoid impacts to the visitor center. And we're also going to possibly look at, you see here, this in pink, this is a potential pedestrian bridge. Because I'm providing the multi-use trail out there and I'm barrier separated, there is no ability for pedestrians to get from the north side to the south side without either going to Del Prado or using this pedestrian bridge. But I would like to tell you, this is an optional service item. It is currently not included in our scope of services, but we wanted to show it to you as, as an opportunity here. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. And here you can see this left-turn movement. Because the westbound bridge will be completely replaced, the, you can get underneath a free-flow left turn to make that U-turn movement to head west and then ultimately north on Del Prado. And here you can see a rendering of what this potentially could look like. Note that the multi-use trail, we've separated that from that U-turn movement. So, we took, remove the conflict between the pedestrian traffic and the vehicular traffic making that U-turn. We have utilized this area underneath the bridge as a potential pond location, or it could be an opportunity for aesthetic features underneath the bridge to provide more park amenities. But we will not impact the visitor center, or we will not impact the, the variable message sign which you see here. If we're looking at the pedestrian bridge, because we are barrier separated, because we are adding multi-use trails there, we feel like pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic will increase there. The pedestrian bridge provides the connectivity, it provides the safety, but it also provides the opportunity to provide this signature entrance into the city of Cape Coral. It provides an opportunity for the city of Cape Coral and Lee County to potentially partner together to work to provide this. Here you can see a rendering of that and an elevation view of what it potentially could look like. It would be ADA compliant, no elevators, opportunity for, you know, community-specific badging and logos. We provided site-specific details like a coral facade fencing, and this cost, right in today's dollars, is about $1.8 million. Moving on to the actual bridges over the Cluseahatchee, the critical issues here, we needed to minimize right-of-way and environmental impacts, minimize the class of action required for the PD&E study, provide the multimodal accommodation, consider long-term maintenance, aesthetic impacts, and impacts to the existing eastbound bridge. Here are the environmental impacts, which will all be considered carefully throughout the study and the design life of this project. The westbound bridge, it was built in 1963. It's 58, 59 years old. At the time it was designed, it had a design life of 50 years. It's functionally obsolete and it is indeed, it's the end of it, at the end of its service life. It is a candidate for replacement. The eastbound bridge, different story, built in 1989. It was built with, designed with a design life of 75 years. So, it is a good candidate for widening. If I'm going to widen the eastbound and replace the westbound bridge, I have to look at the span arrangement because one bridge remains, one bridge gets replaced. So, I got a couple of options. I could either match the existing span arrangement, does not make a good use of today's high-strength materials, or I could optimize them and spread them out, you, with an efficient design span. And then when the, the widened eastbound bridge ultimately is replaced, I'm set up so that I have a good, efficient structure where both bridges have an optimized span arrangement. Here's a rendering of what this bridge could look like. Here you see the widened eastbound bridge and the new westbound bridge. And one thing that we have to look at is, you know, what does the substructure look at? Well, here you can see, the widening is going to provide a, a, an additional column for the rigid frame, multi-column pier out there. Or we could, and the new pier could be similar in, in structure, or we could provide a hammerhead pier, as you see over here on the left of the screen. These are all design refinements as we get through the process. We are going to consider aesthetics through here. It's important. I know it's important to the city and the county. One thing we can accomplish a lot with, with lighting. Here is just a, a rendering of what the lighting impacts would be. This is simplistic lighting. As we go from day to night, we can do a lot with LED lighting that would, and it's a little glitchy there, but we can provide a high level of aesthetic appeal to the bridge at relatively low cost. Moving on to Section 5, once I get to the Fort Myers side, once again, continuity of the typical section from the bridge is to McGregor. I've got constrained right-of-way. I need to avoid impacts to the Landings Golf Course. And this is where the toll plaza, existing toll plaza exists. This is the rendering of what this ultimately will look like with the new toll gantry replacing the existing toll facility out there. Here's the typical section through there. And here you can see I have currently six-foot sidewalks. The best I can do is increase that to eight feet to provide that pedestrian connectivity as I'm going across the bridge all the way to McGregor Boulevard. And the tolling, as I just told you, we're going to all-electronic tolling. We're going to make sure that we maintain and coordinate through the maintenance of traffic phasing. You'll never be, the toll system will never be out of service. We won't take the old system out of service until the new, new gantry is in place. And we have a couple of options. We're going to remove the toll lanes for certain, but we have the existing toll building out there. We could either repurpose it, put, remove the toll lanes, as you see here, utilize it, removing impervious, providing pond facility, and repurpose that existing building for any other use. Or it could be completely removed, remove additional impervious and provide additional pond capacity. But these are all design refinements as we move forward. Once we get all the way to the other end of the project at McGregor Boulevard, once again, this intersection is currently failing, significant delays here, and once again, constrained right-of-way. The proposed improvements here, we will provide a free-flow right-turn lane, a shared through and left-turn lane, as you see here, a new southbound receiving lane, and then there will be the pedestrian facility that will come through here, dramatically increasing the level of service and reducing the delay at this intersection. And here, this is a rendering of what this intersection ultimately could look like. There's a number of aesthetic features that can be incorporated into the project. One of them is landscaping opportunities. There's a lot of opportunity at the Bernice Brayden Park. There's a lot of opportunities at the old toll plaza location. And as we get further into design, we're going to, to look to, to refine these landscaping opportunities and plans throughout the, the project. Pedestrian and bicycle accommodations are a big deal. I know they are to the city. Here you can see what you have out there currently. These people are literally taking their life in their hands, driving on that nonexistent shoulder. The new bridge will have a 10-foot multi-use trail in, in each span, eastbound and westbound. We are going to provide the barrier, or the separation here at the park to avoid the conflict with the U-turn movement. And other pedestrian accommodations, we would consider even scenic overlook. This could go on the widened bridge and the new bridge. They're relatively low-cost but high visual impacts. They're low-maintenance. They're made out of concrete, aluminum, stainless steel. And there are opportunities to provide a gathering point for community events such as red, white, and boom, when you have a lot of people out there. These are things that can be incorporated into the bridge and coordinated through amenities at the park. Again, a lot of impact without a tremendous amount of cost. Right now, we are in the planning, the PD&E phase. This will be an FDOT OEM oversight for this. We are doing this in accordance with FDOT PD&E manual to maintain eligibility for federal funding. So, it increases the process, the length of it a little bit. All it does is increase the amount of coordination and review. This project's already federalized. We cross the federal channel. So, you have to, have to follow this process and make sure that you are NEPA compliant throughout this process. Public involvement, we just finished the public involvement a while ago for the Big Carlos Pass Bridge, had a fair amount of controversy. We don't feel that to be the case here. We feel that generally the stakeholders, yourself included, are very much in favor of the project. We've summarized them here. We're meeting with them all to get a better understanding of their major topics and concerns. There will be a website. It's under development now. It will be put out there. Right now, it, it's not released for general use until we get coordinated with the, the county and have everything on there, you know, ready for public display. But this is where we will have the opportunity to, to input, put in comments, questions. We will gather them all and then distribute them to the, the county and the vested stakeholders. Here is the public involvement milestones. We are right here at the very beginning phase. You see the, the red icons up there. Those are the meetings with the Board of County Commissioners, the blue icons up there. That's where we are right now with this, one of the stakeholder meetings. And then the green icons up there are the large-scale public meetings. We have a, the first public workshop in, I believe it is February of '23, and then the public hearing is scheduled for November of 2023. There's a lot of things that we will be able to get from the comments. We have a lot of demographics which we can pull from them. We'll be able to tell who made the comment, where they were from, what their key issues were, how they accessed the site, and what their, their key concerns are. Just still them down so we'll know where the hot topics and locations are, are the concerns of the, the citizens throughout there. Here is the overall project schedule. This includes the preliminary design, which is, the PD&E study and preliminary design is 30 months. At that point, the county has given themselves the option to either transition to, and they've written a scope accordingly, to have this project go design-build, which we would transition from designer to the owner's rep and help the county procure a design-build team. Or they could elect to continue with us to finish the, the design under a conventional design-bid-build approach. But 48 months will get you through the completion of the design, all the way to final plans, and then construction will begin anticipating it to take three years. And that is all, all that I have right now. But keep in mind, everything is preliminary and evolving as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up for city council for any discussions. Council member Tate.
Is this anticipated to be all taken care of through bridge toll revenues?
Yes.
And no money from the city of Cape Coral? And no money from the City of Cape Coral?
Good afternoon. Randy Surtz of Lee County D O T. Thank you for having us. What was your question?
Financing. I want to know about the possibility of all this being paid for by bridge toll revenues and none, none coming from the City of Cape Coral.
The city has a 40/60 split, as you know, and all 100% go to the, to the toll corridors.
Okay. And on a separate question, I don't know if you can answer this. I don't know if you're the right person. But the signs that are on the bridges now that are all blacked out, are those coming down anytime soon?
Yeah, they look like a redacted government document. The minute we decided to go all-electronic tolls, we got a consultant on board to get the right wording for what we're doing. And I think they're, they're through the design and maybe fabricating by now, they should be up hopefully this fall.
Oh, we have to have wording on there? I thought it was just enter and exit. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, thank you. To, to go a little bit further on what Councilmember Tate said. He said all of this is being funded by the toll dollars. Yet, in the presentation, you presented that there would be a partnership between Cape Coral and Lee County for this pedestrian bridge. So I'm curious as to why we can't just add the pedestrian bridge, which I feel is a great entrance to the city, into the entire project of the, of the new bridge in general.
Again, we're early on in the present, in the design process. We're not even sure if the, if the pedestrian counts on there weren't such a pedestrian overpass back and forth. If it does, the county will look at it. If it does not, it'd be something the city may desire to have. We're just not at that point yet.
Yeah, because I see with adding the, you know, the trails on both sides and, and not allowing people to cut through at the U-turn, which I was assuming the U-turn would cover underneath the hole, not just half of the bridge. I think it's something that's needed, and it's something that I would like to pursue the county to do. Because as, as the largest municipality in the county, and the fact that it's the Cape Coral citizens, basically, that pay the toll every day to cover for this, I think that the county needs to step up and include this into this presentation without asking us to put more of our tax dollars towards it. Because the toll users are the ones who pay for all of this, and, and we do pay the largest percentage into the county. So I'd like you to keep that in consideration during your design phase.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Cosdun.
Thank you, Mayor. I just was going to say the same thing, so I echo what Councilmember Welsh said. Thank you.
Yep. I echo that same sentiment as well, but I know we're early on in the design phase, but I'm glad to see this project moving forward because it is definitely a need here, not only for our city but for the residents of Lee County. So thank you for coming today. Thank you for the presentation. I would only ask, maybe during this process, occasionally, if you could update our staff so they could keep us updated where we are and how we're moving forward, that would be great.
Think we have monthly progress meetings on this and, and all our large CFP projects, and your staff's already been invited to it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda now. I will open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion. I think the city manager had requested to pull item eight, so that is on the table so far. Is there any other items that council wants to pull? If not, do I have a motion to approve all the items except for item eight?
So move.
Second.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosdun?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, I'll turn the floor over to you regarding item eight.
Thank you. I'm going to have representatives from the Development Services Department come to the podium and explain the rationale behind pulling this item from consent.
Good afternoon. Vince Cataro, Development Services Director. The plat that we have before you is called Oasis and Surfside. And as you can see, it's a fairly simple plat. It's to create one lot from two. And the two tracks that exist are here that I'm showing on the screen. These are in your background material, backup information. And as you can see, in the middle of the diagram, there is language regarding utility easements. So hold that thought for a moment. So this is the, the current plat. And this is the proposal, but to create it into one parcel with drainage easements and also lakes. But as you can see, there's some language appearing where I'm pointing, dealing with the utility easement. It's a last-minute change. This is extraneous information that's not needed on the plat because that information is found in other places. So the developer and their representative submitted a new document, and you can see that information is no longer there. So that's the only change we're asking you to make. We had to announce it on the record because we couldn't have you approve the plat as written because it would be incorrect.
Thank you. I'll now open up a discussion for item out, item eight, or entertain a motion.
Motion to approve item eight with the approved language that's provided by staff.
Second.
Any further discussion? See a nun. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosdun?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item nine B, one is appointments to boards and committees. B1 is Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. There's two vacancies, and I'll turn it over to Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, we have two vacancies for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee with one application from Suzie Lee Riggins. Ms. Riggins is present today if you have any questions for her, but it is her desire to serve on the board.
So we have two, two openings, one applicant?
Yes, sir.
And does council want to hear from the applicant, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosdun?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Nine B2 is anticipated vacancy for the Waterway Advisory Board. I think we have three applicants and one alternative vacancy that will be coming up. Madam City Clerk?
So, Your Honor, we have an alternate vacancy today, and we have three applicants, Daniel Ronald Carney, Jeff S. Matty, and Michael B. McGruder. Mr. Matty is unable to attend but expressed his desire to serve on the board. And both Mr. Carney and Mr. McGruder have checked in. If council would like me to call them to the podium.
Okay, I'll ask council, do we want to do one or two minutes? One minute? One minute, okay? Okay, so we'll give each applicant the opportunity to come to the podium. You have one minute to introduce yourselves or tell, tell us anything that you would like us to know.
So I'll call up to the podium Daniel Ronald Carney.
Okay, Mr. Carney, if you could come forward, please.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Council. Looking forward to having an opportunity to serve on this Waterway Advisory Board. Briefly, I purchased a home here about 10 years ago, was a snowbird until last year when I became a permanent resident. When I came first to Cape Coral, the first thing I did was cross that big bridge, saw the water, and was pretty much in awe. And then I learned there's 400 miles of canals, some fresh, some salt. Every single citizen here in Cape Coral is impacted by those canals. And I think the Waterway Advisory Board plays a very important role in providing good information to the council and to the mayor to make sure that there's proper guidance in the maintenance and the future use of these canals. I've attended several of the Water Board Advisory Meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. How long have you lived here, sir?
I've been a full-time resident since August, but I was a snowbird for 10 years, about six months every year.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No, sir. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Michael McGruder?
My name is Mike McGruder. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm interested in serving on the Waterway Committee. I've had a history of all my life being on the water. I came to Florida 12 years ago from California. I escaped. And the waterways of Cape Coral are its best asset. I don't think many of us would be living here, as many people would live here without that. And we, I've had experience also with communities that don't protect their waterways, and they lose the environmental impact reports on them, and then they lose the waterway. So that's happened in North Florida, it's happened in California. We got to be careful. And so stewards of the, of the waterways and city responsibility, I would like to be helpful in that regard. It's very important for all of us, our property values, our enjoyment. I've had a lot of experience in negotiations. Oh, excuse me.
Thank you. And the same question you, sir. How long have you been a resident of Cape Coral? Could you repeat your last name again?
McGruder. I've been there 12 years.
12 years. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so we have one position, alternate position open. We have three applicants, two were present tonight. So Madam City Clerk, I guess we'll do what we normally do, is we'll go down the line in our voting order tonight, and we will pick our first preference to fill this position.
Yes, sir. Cosdun?
McGruder?
Gunter?
McGruder.
Hayden?
Carney.
Nelson?
McGruder. Excuse me, McGruder.
Shepherd?
McGruder.
Tate? Welsh?
Carney.
So that's two for Carney and five for McGruder.
Second.
Any more discussion? See a nun. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosdun?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Item nine B3 is Cape Compete Advisory Board. My understanding, we have eight members, a vacancy for eight members and one alternate. This is a new board. And I believe we have five applicants. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And so you'd like to let us know who's here, and we'll go from there.
All right. So several have checked in, but all of them had indicated that they would be attending. We have Travis DeSere, Jay Santos, Enrico Kenneth Fierretti, John Sherwood, and Donna Germain. Oh, excuse me, Donna Germain notified us this morning that she was unable to attend. She is the Chamber of Commerce Representative.
And do we have any individuals that are currently on our board that would need a majority vote?
Yes. Enrico Kenneth Fierretti.
Okay. And so we have a total of five applicants, correct? And eight positions? Do we want to entertain having the individuals speak, or is there a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve the applicants that have applied.
Second.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, I, I agree to that motion. The only thing is that one of the candidates fits two different categories, one of them being a commercial real estate broker and the other one being a manager of a business at large. And I would like to keep category six open because I feel that we have a bigger pool to pull from. Instead of assigning them to category six, I'd like them to be assigned as category one.
Okay. Councilmember Cosdun.
Thank you. I agree with that. And also, it looks like we have two for category five. So we're going to have to make a choice. We can't just approve the whole list. Am I correct on that?
Well, if I could remind council that it's whenever possible, we'll fill the slots that are available. But currently, I have five applicants, and in order to conduct a meeting in the future, we will need five people present for a quorum.
So these aren't like, these, okay, these categories are optional, recommended, but we don't have to stick to it. Thank you.
And I know we, we had a motion and a second on the floor. Would the motion maker like to revise their motion because of what Councilmember Welsh mentioned?
That's fine. So just be category one. Is that what you had wanted? Yes. So Travis DeSere would be in category one, leaving category six open.
Second agrees.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I'll back the motion, but the fact that we have one person that fits into two categories to me is a, is a plus because we have expertise and knowledge that falls into two categories. And since it doesn't matter that we have two and five, I don't understand why it would be that important when we know at some point we could obviously look at a person because you're looking at their total credentials, not necessarily just the areas, when we can obviously put another person in on six. Just, just wanted the point noted.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussions?
See a nun. We have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
So I have two and five. I would need direction if council wishes to determine who you would like in five, and we can place the other person in a category that, that remains without applications. And they have terms. We could do the term designation after we appoint the members because some terms are for three years and some are for two years.
Okay. And the two names in category five were?
Fierretti and Sherwood.
So I guess we would need to change the motion to outline which one of those individuals would be in category five to start with.
Can I ask a question? And on the terms as well? So could we do like one, three, five, and seven, and then take two, four, six, and eight and do their terms that way?
So the odd years and even years?
The odd years and even years. Would that be easy to do?
And would the odd years be the three- or two-year period?
Whatever council wants. I mean, that...
Three.
Three, that way, that's an odd number, so...
There's an odd number, so it's all odd, yes.
Exactly.
Exactly. Okay. Got that cleared up.
And did you, did I hear in there as far as which individual?
So if I can clarify the motion then, so we now have the terms that we would establish by motion, and then for me, it would be Fierretti needs two-thirds vote. So I would make him category five.
And the other individual, we will...
And the other individual, you can reclassify.
Can we?
Is that okay, Madam City Clerk?
Or do we need to identify what category that individual's going to be going in?
I think you can, city manager has to do it? Okay.
Madam City Attorney, you have any direction there?
Since you're able to appoint people who are outside of the categories altogether...
It doesn't matter.
I don't think you really need to definitely classify people as being within a category. Those categories are...
Recommendations.
Well, they're, they're a goal. They're to try to get diversity on, on the board, but I don't think you need to necessarily pigeonhole because you may end up with a leftover, not a leftover, but you may get an applicant still remaining who doesn't, clearly doesn't fit in, in a remaining category. And you don't want to just peg them into that category because they're your next applicant. So I do think you have that flexibility. Now, I'm not trying to keep you from people who clearly fit into a category saying, oh, I really like this applicant because I think they clearly fit into category three or whatever. But you don't have to peg everybody into a category.
Okay. Then I just leave my motion as it is.
Okay. Any other discussion?
See a nun. Madam City Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
See a nun, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
And thank you to all the applicants for all the boards that applied. Item nine C is unfinished business. C one is follow-up items for council, I don't see anything listed. Does council have any follow-up items? Okay, see a nun, we'll move on to item nine D, which is new business. D one is naming of Sands Neighborhood Park location. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has been following the process established by city council with respect to naming certain facilities, and as you know, up until now, with some exception, we haven't formally named some of the new park facilities that we're building under the Parks GO bond program. And so, following the city's policy adopted by city council, we worked with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, sought community input, and then the Parks Advisory Board made three recommendations to city council, and their number-one recommendation is that you merely name the park that we refer to as Sands Neighborhood Park as Sands Park.
What he said.
Okay, short and sweet, that's what I like.
And I would assume that...
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't see Connie standing at the podium, sorry.
Okay, now that we have that summed up, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Sands Park.
Second.
Madam City Attorney?
Doesn't this need an ordinance? I believe this needs an ordinance to come back, and we'll name it by ordinance. So, what we're really looking for, I think, is direction to the city attorney's office to bring back an ordinance, naming it Sands Park.
That is correct. Okay, it sounds like you have a consensus from council, so go ahead and work on the... Go ahead and work on that ordinance, and we look for it.
We will, we absolutely will.
Thank you. Okay, nine D two was the bridge discussion, we moved that up into the agenda. Item nine E is personnel actions. Nine E one is a continued conversation for hiring council office personnel, legislative executive assistant to council. As we all know, this has been a process that we've been going through for several weeks now. We narrowed it down to three candidates. I believe a majority of council has had one-on-one interviews, and now's the time that I'll open up for any discussion, additional discussion that we would like to have on this item. At some point, I guess we will do very similar to what we did with just the boards, we'll pick the individual who is our top choice. We'll do that by our voting order tonight, but for now, I will open up the floor for any discussions before we get to that point, if we have any. Councilmember Welsh?
Not necessarily a discussion, but being a part of this from start to now coming to finish, I want to thank all the applicants that we were able to see and speak to, and I would especially like to thank the three that we were able to personally interview. The three of them made it a much tougher choice than what I thought it was gonna be, and I want to thank each of them for their time to come in and interview with us. That's it.
Thank you, yeah, I'd like to echo that as well. As we all know, this process started with over ninety applicants, it dwindled down from there. We did narrow it down to five applicants to interview on a one-on-one basis. Two of those applicants withdrew, so it left us with three, so thank you to all three of the applicants for their willingness and desire to come and work at the council office. Thank you, you know, for your efforts up to this point. If there's no other discussion, then I would ask Madam City Clerk to go down the list, the voting order, and we will choose an individual as our number-one choice.
Just one moment, Your Honor. So, I apologize, I've been outside of the interview process, and I do not have a listing of the names.
Okay. I think the applicants, the three applicants remaining, we have Ms. Monroe.
Monroe.
We have Ms. Rosario.
Rosario.
And we have Ms. Williams.
Williams?
Williams.
Thank you very much. Costin?
Monroe.
Gunter?
Williams.
Hayden?
Williams.
Nelson?
Williams.
Shepherd?
Williams.
Tate?
Williams.
Welsh?
Rosario.
So, that's one for Monroe, one for Rosario, and five for Williams.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve Lisa Williams.
Second.
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, if you could go ahead and call that roll, and then I think we will have a discussion thereafter in reference to salary.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, and if I could ask someone from HR to please come to the podium, and I know this is an MB 108 classification as far as the employee in this position, could you tell us what the minimum and the maximum salary range is for that position, please?
Ms. Angie Klein from Human Resources will come to the podium.
Yes, sir. The minimum of that position, would you prefer hourly or annual?
Just annually is fine.
Annual, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents, and the maximum is seventy-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars and forty cents.
Thank you. I will now open up that discussion for council. Councilmember Costin?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you sit down, I have a question. What is the standard process when HR is hiring city employees for any job? Where do they fall in the range? How do we make that decision?
It is based on qualifications. There are guidelines in the, excuse me, personnel ordinance. Anything above ten percent would require city manager approval. So, again, it depends on qualifications.
Knowing this applicant, do you have a recommendation that you can give us?
I apologize, I have not seen the candidates, so...
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, is if HR had any sort of recommendations for us along the lines of this, but apparently, we do not, so...
All right, Councilmember Tate? Yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead, maybe he'll be able to help.
Did you want to say something, sir?
I did speak with all three candidates, and explained to them that the starting pay would be at the minimum of the pay grade, and they all seemed to be acceptable to all three of them.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I, you know, I think that the minimum and the maximum that you outlined, I'm okay with starting out at the minimum. The other thing that you could take into consideration, I wouldn't support anything above five percent on that, even though that particular applicant does have some experience. They work in the council office in Fort Myers now, so they are familiar with probably that position, and have experience exclusively in working with councils. So, that may be a little additional attribute as a applicant, but I'm okay at the forty-seven, eight-hundred, or whatever it was mentioned as well.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to do the forty-seven, eight, sixty, eighty, if we get started that way.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second, and I believe the motion is to start the applicant at the minimum pay range?
I did just want to let council know, there is a provision in the ordinance that if a candidate starts at the minimum of the pay grade, when they complete their initial probationary period, which is typically six months, their pay can be raised up to ten percent.
Okay, that's great.
I had one more question about the hiring part of it. Do we have to give a timeframe of when they would start? Because I know when Ms. Williams talked to me, she said it was recommended to her to start in thirty days, and that she would have to give a notice in Fort Myers, so I didn't know if we have to determine that tonight and make it part of the motion, or...
Yeah, I mean, I will say that when I spoke to each one of the candidates, or the applicants, you know, my preference or desires at least give them a thirty-day opportunity, so they can give a thirty-day notice at their present employer. I think that's only being fair. I know we're getting ready to go on hiatus, so that thirty days, there will be almost here by the time that we come back. So, that would be my recommendation.
Does that have to be in the motion, Madam City Attorney?
It would be best if you went ahead and specified not only the pay, but also the day that you're anticipating that they would start, which is normally like the beginning of a...
Pay period.
Pay period.
Okay, so when is that pay period, so we can, if somebody can give me that date, so I can add it into the motion?
I have a calendar with me that identifies the end of pay dates on a Friday, so the following Monday, if we were to go thirty days from now...
So, that would be the eighteenth of July?
Eighteenth of July.
Okay, so I would include in my motion...
Oh, I apologize, that would be during the pay period, the twenty-fifth would be the beginning of one.
So, she wouldn't start until the twenty-fifth?
So, it would either be the eleventh or the twenty-fifth to be the start of the pay period, at my under...
Let our take a peek at that one.
Yep.
While they're looking at that, could I make a comment?
Go ahead, yes, sir.
As much as I think thirty days, if we put it at thirty days as the starting day, I would rather encourage them to do thirty days as the max for them to take the job. I wouldn't, I really wouldn't oppose them coming in if they are allowed two weeks at their current position and able to come in. I'd rather them come into the office while we're not there, get situated. That'll give Connie and James more time to let them know, because with us coming back on the twentieth, if they get there on the eighteenth, knowing how much we're gonna come into, into the budget, I would prefer them having a week or two to familiarize themselves with the city. So, I don't want to limit them to having to come those days, but maybe put a maximum on it, if that's possible.
Can we change our, can we add that into the motion to give a start date as they...
I would, yeah, I would say as the maximum, the...
Yeah, because maybe they only need a two-week...
Right, they may want to just go ahead and give their two weeks, and that's fine. I think that we should say, by X amount of date, they have to start by that date.
Are you guys trying to tell us something?
I just want to make sure you understand, the thirty-day start period begins when she were to give notice to her current employer. We still have to run a background check...
Okay.
...which could take upwards of two weeks. So, if you take two weeks and add another thirty days on, you're six weeks out.
Oh, no, we can't do that.
Right. Yeah, I would say that my preference is about thirty days for the whole process to work out.
So, I need a start date, if somebody can give me that date to add into the motion, so...
July eleventh is the beginning of a pay period, and July twenty-fifth is the beginning of a pay period.
I would want to do July eleventh, if you can get your background check done, so when we get back, as Bobby said, but Councilmember Welsh said, we would be ready. So, my motion would include July eleventh start date, if at all possible, with her other job.
Okay, I can convey that to her when I speak to her tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
And if you would, if you could maybe give us all a follow-up email?
Yes, no problem.
So, we know what we're doing.
So, we know exactly where we stand.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second agrees. Councilmember Nelson?
Do you agree?
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, any other discussion on that motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, nine F is petitions to council, we don't have any listed. Item nine G is follow-up items for city management. G one is water quality. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, it's time once again for your regular update on water quality issues affecting the city of Cape Coral, so I'm going to ask the staff of the Public Works Department, led by Public Works Director Mr. Ilches, into the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mayor Robert, Public Works. Since the beginning of the rainy season, the US Army Corps have stopped discharging water from Lake Okachobee out of S-77 in Moore Haven. Ever since, we've only received runoff from the rain from the basin, so downstream of Moore Haven. We were advised yesterday that there were sightings of blue-green algae at the Alva Board Ramp, S-79, and North Shore Park in North Fort Myers. Toxin results came back only for North Fort Myers at this time, and just this afternoon, the Florida Department of Health issued an advisory, the toxin levels is just at the detection limit. Yesterday, we got a report of blue-green algae just north of Savona Parkway and south of Paco Grande. And this afternoon, we got a report from substantiated by a resident who had sightings at further downstream in other channels, which are on the side that we regularly check. These are smaller digit channels, dead ends, so that's where it tends to accumulate. And it was all the way down to the Yak Club and in Beaminie Basin. The Department of Environment Protection was alerted yesterday, and today again. They had staff go in yesterday, and we are waiting to see when they will go and investigate the rest of the location, if they are. At this point, we're not sure what the algae sources. These are just streaks and accumulation, we just had a quick check on the microscope this afternoon, it seems to be predilect concentration, but we'll see. So, this is for the river update, but again, there has been no release from Lake Okachobee, although there are blooms potential occurring on the northwest side of the lake. And so, these are likely from runoff from our basin, all the way from Moore Haven, all the way downstream. The blue-green algae bloom that was occurring in the Boris Canal, we have had nutrient checks and checks on cells, there's no more cells presence. The most recent toxin results show concentration that are less than a hundred times less than what the federal government consider a recreational health hazard. And because we don't have state guidance, because it's not water of the states, we are going to pull out all of the advisory signs by the end of this week, and we consider this basin treated. We will keep monitoring the basin, and we will install a long-term water quality station at that basin. On the bubble curtain updates, we have scheduled a meeting with FDP to resolve the issue of the permit from FDP. And the summer fertilizer ordinance restriction has been in effect since June first, and will be ongoing through September thirtieth. There's been a pretty effective campaign going on, we've had people reaching out to us regarding this. We're continuing efforts, and when the season is over, we will have an off-season, a separate effort for campaign when it comes to dry season and no phosphorus during the whole year. If you have any question, let me know.
Thank you, any questions? Councilmember Tate?
Can you send me a map of where you've sighted this evening, where the blue-green algae sightings are? I think, from what I heard, you say it's in the Gold Coast and heading into the Yak Club?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to have a map of that, so I can follow it, so I know. And then, once you have identified what the issue is, or what has caused it, since they're not releasing any water, I know, what is the issue with the bubble curtains now?
We are waiting the permit from the Florida Department of Environment Protection, and then there will be about nine...
I mean, what are they requiring, or what other information do they need, or what is the holdup?
During the review process, there were two channels that had issues with the state land determination, and we made the choice to correct this. And so, we had to deal with different departments within the Florida Department of Environment Protection to modify those state land determinations, so that we could be able to deploy those bubble curtains where we needed them.
Okay, so if it's, I'm just trying to figure this out, if it's in the, one of the canals off of Palaco, okay, for instance, that's where we can put a bubble curtain, I believe, correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we have any way that we can go ahead and facilitate that, if we find out that it's an issue?
Not without breaking regulatory processes.
I mean, we don't have regulatory process for anything, or I thought, since we were talking about two pieces of property, that maybe the other ones have been approved, no? that maybe the other ones have been approved, no?
No, so the permit application is all ten sites, so when they release it, they'll release all ten. So those two, we are setting up a meeting with them at the district level to try and basically say, you know, that's an idea, can you release the eight sites that don't have an issue? The two sites that had an issue, we responded to them months ago. Our city surveyor dealt with this issue, basically brought it to the state's attention that their own surveying mapping was incorrect. They have sent us email confirmations affirming that we're right, we just have not been able to get the reviewer to release the permit. So we're escalating this up, because at this point, the rainy season is here. We already have the federal permit, which is usually the harder one to get. It was a state error, they agreed with our, you know, revision of what they're saying, and we still can't get the permit.
Is it something the mayor could write a letter and see if he could escalate it, and to someone in the governor's office or something?
You know, we typically don't escalate to elected official, you know, we stay at the staff level. If we get nowhere at the staff level, you know, perhaps we'll send a letter through Rob's office to you all to say, you know, we're doing, again, we're trying, you know, we're trying to do everything we can.
I understand that, but we're now at, we have algae in the canals, so I just think we need to push as hard as we can. And the map would be greatly helpful.
Yes, we have a map of, actually, one of the residents that sent it in kind of mapped out a Google map for everybody, but we'll put one together that also shows the others. Maya had mentioned it, I don't know if you kind of caught it, so right now, there are no releases coming out of Lake O.
Right, I got that.
So right now, all the water that's coming through the Franklin Lock is starting basically from there. It's what we call inter-basin flow, so all the runoff coming out of the agricultural lands, the cow pastures, the residential improved development areas enters into the river, and then that is what we're receiving at this point.
Because there was algae in the Franklin Locks, correct?
Yes, and so our operating permit with the Army Corps of Engineers specifically states, if there is a presence of algae at the lock, we have the ability to turn the bubble curtain on.
Right, so if we had the bubble curtains, that would have protected us at this point?
For the two sites, it wouldn't do anything south of the bridge, up into the Bimini Basin and the Yak Club. That would still be open.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update. Okay, item ten is ordinance and resolutions, ten A is public hearings, we have ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Cape Coral Rowing Club, Inc. for the lease of property owned by the city of Cape Coral being a portion of tract E, block sixty-four zero-three, Cape Coral, Unit seventy-six, The Islands, as described herein, located in the seven islands for the operation of a paddle sport training area, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember Dawn Andrews with the Real Estate Division, property management under Public Works. Ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-two is requesting authorization to enter into a lease agreement with the Cape Coral Rowing Club on, as a temporary lease arrangement on a piece of property that the city owns off of Old Burn Store Road, known as the Seven Islands. I have some overhead maps I'll put on in a moment. The rowing club, last June of 2020, there was some authorization to put them into our Tropicana Park property that's under development through the GOVAN, and they will be sighted there. Their current location, they've been asked to leave due to development of a site there in Cape Harbor, where they've been for fifteen years. And so we were looking for some temporary arrangement for them until Tropicana Park was completed. So on the overhead, we are putting them, God, everything changed up here, I'm sorry. So at the top of the map is where Tropicana Park is, the end of Tropicana Park, maybe? We'll just go like this. So this is Tropicana Park where it ends, here on Old Burn Store Road, and these are the seven islands. And we found a place in the southern portion of the islands, it's on the third one from the southern island up, and it's over here on the island in a small portion of an area. And they'll be sighted from behind some tree coverage, where they'll be able to have a fenced area where they'll keep their boats and their boat racks and items. I know there's been some other discussion as to some concerns, because it would be considered a park facility, so there'll be a porta potty on the site. It can be located somewhere in the area here, but any location of the fence, the porta potty would be determined with the city manager or his designees' approval prior to it being there. Any permits would have to be obtained through the row club. The lease right now is for a two-year period, beginning as soon as council approves the lease, and it would be ending June fifteenth. There is an extension period if everything is going, and the sale of the seven islands hasn't moved forward. As you know, there is a proposal on the table, we've talked to that buyer, that buyer is okay with us allowing this lease to move forward. There is a clause that does state that they would, at the earliest of a termination, be there through June fifteenth, 2023, in case something moved forward with the sale of the property sooner. So they're aware of that, and we're hoping that the Tropicana Park will receive its permits from the, I think we're waiting on permitting from the regulatory agencies so that we can move forward with the construction on that. And I can stand by for any other questions you may have.
Thank you, I now open up public hearing, if there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-two, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Sandra Weston, I am the current president of the rowing club. First of all, thank you, we're super delighted, we didn't want to cease operations. There's a lot of negative things that happen when we do that, so much appreciated for partnering with us and giving us a chance to make this happen. I read over the documents and had some discussion with members of staff while both documents, we'll discuss the other one later, but were being constructed. And honestly, the only issue, I sent you guys all an email on Friday, I know you guys had the retreat, I don't know if you've had a chance to read through all that word salad, but the bottom line is, the number one issue for us is just with hours of operation. And the primary issue with that falls in the dead of winter. Hours of operation are listed in Article Three, Premises, Section C, Hours of Operation, and they read, "Lessee may use the premises at any time without reservation from sunrise to sunset, seven days a week, Lessee shall be prohibited from accessing or utilizing the premises outside of such time periods." I did send the email as well as a link to a little spreadsheet that basically just showed, this pretty much negates adult programs for a certain portion of the year, because any kind of master's athletic endeavor usually needs to take place before or after work hours. So I tried to include what's typical and common for other rowing clubs throughout Florida, as well as some big marquee rowing clubs that are hugely popular. I mean, I'm sure you've never heard of them, but in the rowing world, you know, we know who they are. Most of the time, it's five-thirty AM to seven AM in the morning before work is when masters go out, or they'll start, they'll start at like six forty-five PM. So for our adults, we've tried during the dead of winter, really, really tried, to have practices begin at five-thirty PM, but we've just never been successful. Inevitably, you have a couple people who can get there on time, and then you're waiting for everyone else. And so we sort of just gave up on that and started publishing a six PM start time, because working adults just can't make it across the bridge, through the traffic, et cetera, et cetera, and be there for a five-thirty practice. As the youth coach, I can tell you definitively, there's a three to four week period of time during December and January, when we actually are doing race training for competition. We have a mid-December competition, we have a mid-January competition, and then mid-February is when everything really starts kicking into high gear. We run into dusk pushing towards civil twilight around five forty-five, five fifty PM. So having to operate sunrise to sunset basically means suspending those adult programs. No one else is doing that, so I guess what I'd like to ask is for consideration to just get some breathing room and stay with the kind of schedule we'd have for the last fifteen years. It's also commensurate with a lot of things that happen. We're more of a sport than a park, I think that's clear, right? We do competitions, we go to regattas, et cetera, so it's not like we're keeping park hours, if you will. We actually have very sporadic hours, we have people row in the morning, we have absolutely nothing happening generally in the middle of the day when it's blazing hot, and then in the evening when people get off work or after school during youth season, that's when we have people coming out to practice. So that's the only thing I'd ask for relief on, and if you have any questions or anything about that, yeah, I'd be happy to respond. Some of the city's own programs for adults follow this pattern as well, you know, I mean, softball's current season right now, games are six forty-five and eight PM, because people work, right? So that's the only thing I'd ask for relief on. I don't have any issues with any of the other things, I mean, obviously, the lease agreement says, be good citizens, and, you know, that's what we've done for fifteen years, so we're perfectly fine with that. The other item that I did mention in the email, that I just wasn't sure whether or not it needed to be formalized, if you will, is the issue of safety boats. So I have to have safety boats, and every water sport operation, especially with youth programs, but we also have Learn to Row for Beginners and Coach Programs for Adults, where we have a coach on the water with our rowers. With the youth, it's non-negotiable, I mean, I obviously can't let them out there without a coach who has all the proper certifications present. So we have pontoon boats with a strong, strong desire to fundraise and go to wakeless launches, which are, you know, premier, they're not horribly expensive, but when you're a 501(c)(3), everything's horribly expensive. So anyway, those boats generally sit in water. And so I just wanted to bring up the fact that ideally, along the shoreline, where the floating dock would be, to have a safety boat there and accessible so that when youth crew pulls out and starts the turn to head toward the spreader waterway, a coach can be right there with, you know, supervising the youth crew. So I know that the kayak club, which is probably the only closest reference organization, they had theirs sitting at Lake Kennedy right beside their dock in water. It was a totally different waterway, obviously, but I think I put a picture of the way they sit right now at Cape Harbor, and with that email. I don't know if these things have to be cited, discussed, specified in either of the legal documents. I just don't want to get over to a site on city property and have there be confusion or questions or issues. Does that make sense?
How many safety boats are we talking?
In youth season, we have two, yeah, two's always the maximum we have on the water. And if any questions come up, I'm
Yeah, I got a couple, if you don't mind.
Okay, perfect.
First question is, so I would guess during daylight savings time in the wintertime, if you say, I guess you go out on the spreader at nighttime?
Yes.
Which you're saying, five-thirty, six PM?
We get youth off the water typically in winter about five forty-five, but the adults go generally after. They generally can't start until five forty-five or six, so they light up everything. They have stern lights, they have bow lights, navigation lights, they generally have their coxswain in a flashing lit vest as well to go out and get water time. That's pretty typical, there's actually some companies making some serious money with just making lights for rowing boats.
All right, and how about summertime, summer months, what's the, is it still that five-thirty, six o'clock they're going out?
We keep that same schedule at the six o'clock, and in summertime, when the daylight sticks around, then everybody patronizes a local place together afterwards, you know?
And when, what time do you usually get completed by?
You know, I think that the boats are generally off the water, I mean, ninety minutes would be a long practice, seventy-five to ninety, so you're talking seven-thirty, and then that's when everything's like onshore. And then the boat cleanup and putting the equipment away is another ten, fifteen.
So eight PM?
Yeah, I would call it eight to be safe, sure.
So, and so if we approve something, operating hours, six AM to eight PM, then that would fit within the confines that you're looking for?
It would certainly be, yeah, much better, yeah.
You know, my concern is mainly, you know, for the residents who live in that area.
Sure.
You know, I don't, what time do you find it as far as sunrise, winter and summer?
In the early morning, right now, I mean, unless the demographics of our club change, I'm looking over at my adult rowers, we don't have a lot of people who are heavily motivated to go out before sunrise. I've got only a couple of rowers right now that are rowing single skulls. One has been rowing the Northwest Spreader because she just can't stop rowing, and she generally will go a little bit before six, five-thirty, Joan, would you say? It is usually the earliest.
I have bright lights all over my boat.
Yeah, she lights herself like a Christmas tree.
You know, all right, so I could support if the hours of operation was six AM to eight PM, and I think that sounds like that will work all year round for you?
Yeah, it should be workable, sure.
And then I think that it's always better to be extremely clear on the boats. So I would say that I don't have a problem personally, two safety boats?
Yes.
Have to be in the water, so that's what I could, I could live with those parameters. Sounds like it'll fit your schedule.
Yes.
Eight PM to me isn't that, isn't that late, especially in summertime, it's still going to be daylight. So that's where I'm at with that, Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I'm okay with the six AM to eight PM, but I'm concerned, because part of the reason why we're allowing the rowing club to use this is they're bringing a floating dock, and citizens or regular, anyone else can be able to use it too. So by taking up spots on that dock with safety boats, to me, is going to provide a disservice for anyone that wants to use that floating dock. So knowing how close Serrano Vista Park is to where that location is, I don't see a reason why they can't pull the boats in and out as needed. So I'm willing to adjust the hours, but I'm not so willing to give free docking for safety boats.
So, thank you, I guess my question would be to you, would, could there be a way where the floating dock is still accessible to the public, even with the boats being in the water somewhere close by?
Yes, absolutely, we never dock them, or we never tie them and block the dock. We actually tie them offshore, so like right now, for example, you know, there's a boardwalk, of course, our pre-existing boardwalk at Cape Harbor, so we have just cleated on the pre-existing pilings, but the safety boats sit off to the side, and the dock is still fully accessible, the floating dock. So yes, we would never, it's really not a great way to secure them, frankly. So we'd rather secure them tethered to shore.
Can staff pull up the aerial and show exactly where the, I thought we saw a aerial?
I have this. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, maybe we can put that up, and then we can see where, exactly where that floating dock, like Councilmember Welsh said, I still want to make sure it's accessible Like Councilmember Welsh said, I still want to make sure it's accessible to the, you know, somebody in a kayak at 1 o'clock in the afternoon wants to go down there, I want to make sure it's still accessible, so. And that's, you know, something that I guess staff can work out as well. Where are those boats? If we allow those two safety boats, exactly where they're located, that's something staff can work out at a later time. I don't think we need to do that here. I think the choice that we have to make is whether they'll be allowed to keep two boats or not. And then I think staff can work the details out from there. Anything else, Councilmember Welsh?
Do you currently have trailers for the safety boats that you'll be able to move them and launch them on a daily basis?
We have one trailer, but the problem, logistical problem with what you're describing is that I have one other coach. And we generally have 25 to, well, I'm hoping upwards of 50 kids as we grow. I can't leave those kids unsupervised to go to a location that has a boat ramp. I do have only one trailer primarily because the boats generally float in the water. I can't, if I'm going to tie them up, for example, if I am going to go to a marina where I have to store them, or if I'm going to take them from the island and then drive them up to, what, Burnt Store, I guess, is the closest boat ramp? Put them in the water there, I've got to have two people for that. One to drive the boat around, one to bring the truck and trailer back. And then, I'm going to have to tie them up on shore for when the kids arrive anyway. Do you know what I'm saying? But I, it's extremely difficult because they are pontoon boats. And the reason they're pontoon boats and not johnboats that I just dragged down the shore is because I have to have enough safety equipment in both boats to be able to make a rescue. And generally speaking, in a sweepboat, I have nine miners in a sweepboat. And with 25 to 30 kids, I have multiple boats out on the water. So, our safety launches are chuck full of safety gear. It's also in the pontoon, it's easier to do rescues, frankly. I can bring a kid onboard if there's a capsize. I can put oars onboard if something, if I have equipment failure, so.
I understand the need for the safety boats and the pontoon boats. What I'm trying to address is, is do you have the ability to launch the boats and use them and then take them away from the premises? Because what we're trying to do, I feel, is help the rowing club out by providing this lease, which we had some backlash from, from other citizens. And then, now we're putting in a floating dock and now we're allowing a club to park a boat there as well. So, I'm just looking for a little give and take as far as is it possible to operate without keeping the safety boats there?
Not effectively in accordance with my rules, no.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate?
I guess I would like to ask staff, the city attorney, we're talking about changing some hours and now we're addressing safety boats. And I certainly understand what she's saying. I don't have a problem with that. I don't think it's going to interfere with the ramp. Do we, how do we address this so it is correct and legal in the lease?
The hours is an easy fix. Instead of saying sunrise to sunset, we could say 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for example.
Okay.
Okay, and we can do that, that's easy. I was just confirming with Mr. Cataro that neither the lease nor the temporary use agreement currently talks about safety boats at all. Or even, they don't preclude them, for example. But my understanding is that the rowing club would like a heightened sense of security, recognizing, they want some recognition that they're allowed to have those two safety boats, which would be motorized, is my understanding. Those would be the only non-motor, I mean, the only motorized boats. We could put in the lease and in the temporary use agreement, if that matters, that the two safety boats, when moored, or, moored?
Right.
When moored, will be moored in such a way that they will not preclude access by the public to the floating dock. And we could just, if that's the concern, then we could put that in there. That does not go beyond the scope of either the lease or the, or the temporary use agreement. Not that we're on the temporary use agreement currently.
So, we can go ahead and make that adjustment this evening and then leave the additional language to you?
Oh, yes, we can, well, we'd like the hours.
I just wanted to make sure that we could go ahead and vote, because I don't want to delay it any further.
Yes, we can address both of those things in the lease. And in the way that I just suggested, if that's what, if that's what your concern is.
That language sounded good to me. I just wanted to further clarify it.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, the US rowing site doesn't spend a whole lot of time on rowing in the dark. It's mainly between sunrise and sunset, but they do address it. So, I guess I need some assurances before I, because you being seen at night and you knowing where you're going at night are big concerns. So, it talks about a 360-degree all-around white light on the stern of each rowing shell when rowing between sundown and sunup. It should be visible enough to be seen by approaching vestibule. Are all your shells capable of doing that?
Yes, yes. We have navigation lights we put on the bow with the starboard and port designations. And then, we have a stern light that does have a 360. Generally speaking, we will have our bow seat rower either wearing a lighted vest or a flickering flash on the hat. And we generally have our coxswain always wearing a lighted vest as well. So, we try to overdo it, for sure.
And then it talks about the bow of every boat should have a red light on the port side and a green light on the starboard side. You're meeting those?
Yes, sir.
Recommendations as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you're carrying a sound-making device?
We do have whistles.
Okay.
And they are loud.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to do exactly what Councilmember Tate did and ask you, Madam City Attorney, if those things could easily be changed and adjusted in the lease. And again, you know, knowing where this location is, it doesn't look like there's any, you know, residences directly on it. So, that is comforting, then we won't have any complaints, hopefully, from residents. And then in terms of the boat, floating dock, I don't have any issue with that either. I mean, we used to row at 5:00 AM every morning, so, you know, you can't exactly, it's hard to take those safety boats and, you know, schlep them far away and back. It doesn't, logistically, it doesn't make sense. So, I don't have any issue with that either. I just wanted to make sure that those adjustments could easily be made. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion, or is there someone like to make a motion?
I have a motion.
And could you describe what your motion is?
The motion is to approve Ordinance 51-22 with the amendments that were stated earlier regarding the floating dock as well as the hours specification. Is that good?
And the hours were?
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
And so, and the boats, the safety boats will be moored so as not to preclude access to the floating dock by the public.
Correct. That residents will still be able to access, anybody can access that floating dock.
And no more than two safety boats?
No more than two.
Okay.
With all their safety stuff and lights.
Madam City Clerk?
I just wanted to give you a reminder to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Please.
All right. Any other discussions? At this time, is there anyone else that wants to speak during public input? Seeing none, public input is now closed. We have a motion and a second on the floor. If we have no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Hey, thank you. We'll move on to Resolution 124-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the titles.
Resolution 124-22. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, approving a temporary use agreement between the City of Cape Coral and Cape Coral Rowing Club, Inc., for the temporary use of city property for recreational rowing activities, providing an effective date.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. For the record, Amy Yearsley with the Planning Division. This resolution kind of closes the loop on our previous discussion. Resolution 124-22 is a resolution approving a temporary use agreement in accordance with Section 5.9.1 of the city's land development code. The section of the code allows for the approval of temporary uses not listed in the LDC with a temporary use agreement. The agreement mirrors the parameters set forth in the lease agreement, including but not limited to the term, the ancillary uses, and the special conditions of the use. Given our previous discussion, there may be a need to amend the hours as well as the discussion regarding the safety boats. But for the most part, it does mirror the lease agreement, and the lease agreement is the stronger of the two agreements.
Thank you. I now open up public input. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 124-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 124-22?
So, move with the language for the hours and the mooring of the safety boats, as per the city attorney.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd? Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. It's 6:50, I think we'll take a 10-minute break until 7:00 PM. I think we'll take a 10-minute break until 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
But I'm here today to, I back up along that development that they're going to put in behind me. And I understand, I've been here long enough to see all the growth and understand that you can't stop it. But what I do get upset about is that it's not a PUD, it's not going to go before a lot of people to get it, to make sure that everyone is protected. And I'm concerned about us being the older community built in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. We're down low. And are they going to build their property up high and what's going to happen to us? We already have drainage issues from when they put in the water and sewer on Nelson. I brought that to the, up to the city before on it. And so anyway, so that's one of my concerns is about the drainage. Where's the drain, water gonna go? Unfortunately, last zoning hearing, we had a lot of residents here. Well, it's not a big community, but we had other residents that spoke out. And I saw a couple here that got tired and went home. But anyway, I think that they just really don't think it's gonna do any good, and maybe it won't, but I just want to make sure that you understand our concerns. The other concern is with neighborhood commercial. I don't understand why you have to put a bar, or it could be a bar, right there when there's residents across the street on Nelson and right over there on West Green Pine. Why can't they go on Pine Island, some of the major ones, or on the corners? Why do they have to be stuck in our neighborhood? It's very unfortunate. And the police department said during the zoning that, you know, they do get issues when they put these bars in neighborhoods. It's very, very unfortunate that y'all allow this, or have allowed this, or will allow it. The other thing is, is that the aerial's not up right now, but one of the, one of the edges of that property, back up to my lake, it's my private lake. I pay taxes on it, I pay stormwater on it, even though it is water. I don't, can't figure that out, but anyway. And I don't want them putting their water into my, their drainage into that lake. It's the lake that's butt up right there, it's next to the red, right at the end. Yeah, that's mine. And I own some acreage there. We still, my family, believe it or not, we still swim in that lake. It's a spring-fed lake, we swim in it, we boat in it, we fish in it. And we don't want it to be ruined by their fertilizers and pesticides or whatever else they got coming in there. I heard about the water quality just earlier. And y'all are battling in canals, what am I gonna do? And so that is my other concern. I'm trying to be fair here. I know we can't stop growth, I see it. But listen, just protect what I have and what I've had all these years and our family has had. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other one wishing to speak during public input? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion or any discussion from council?
I'll make a motion, ordinance 57-22.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion from council?
Is that motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, no further discussion. We have a motion to approve on the floor with a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Move on to ordinance 57-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 57-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan based upon revisions to Florida statutes and the state mandated evaluation and appraisal analysis process by amending the capital improvement element, the conservation and coastal management element, the housing element, the future land use element, the infrastructure element, the intergovernmental coordination element, the recreation and open space element, the transportation element, the economic development element, and the public school facilities element. All is described in the attached exhibits A through J. Amending the comprehensive plan list of maps as depicted in the attached exhibits K through R, providing for severability and an effective date.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Daltry City Planning Division, my credentials may be obtained at the City Clerk's office. This is ordinance 57-22. Per state law, local governments are required to evaluate and appraise their comprehensive plan every seven years, the schedule that the Department of Economic Opportunity releases. This process used to be known as the Evaluation Appraisal Report, the ER process. In 2011, there were amendments to state law which modified this process, but the evaluation requirement was still retained. Instead of developing a rather large report, sometimes in excess of 200 pages, which evaluated every single policy in the comp plan, what local governments are supposed to do now is merely review what state requirements had developed since the previous evaluation appraisal of the comp plan and to include that into your plan. In addition, local governments are permitted to add other changes to the comprehensive plan during this process. In our case, recently, we met with the Planning and Zoning Commission monthly from May through October 2021 to review proposed changes and obtain input from the public. We submitted a letter as required by the Department of Economic Opportunity, which identified those amendments, needed to redress the missing state requirements, and identify changes to the plan. That letter was submitted back in late September 2021. Per state law, city has 365 days after submitting that letter to make changes identified, what we would call the evaluation appraisal-based amendment. Failure to do this restricts the city from adopting more changes to the comprehensive plan and to the future land use map, so that's kind of the stick that the state wields. I will go through basically the major items that are proposed as changes to the comprehensive plan. Generally speaking, this will update planning timeframes to 2030 for the short term and 2050 for long term. There are several housekeeping changes for format, superfluous language, punctuation. A lot of dates are being revised from 2020 and 2022 to 2028, which would be the expected next evaluation appraisal due date. What this does not include, and what is not proposed through this ordinance, there are no new future land use map classifications that are proposed, there are no proposed changes to the future land use map, there's no changes or no, this does not affect the budget, there are no capital, no new capital improvement project, projects, there's no proposed changes to our adopted levels of service, except for parks, and I'll get to that later in this presentation. I'll just go by elements here. In some cases, there are very few key elements. For instance, the capital improvement element, there are no key amendments, changes within this element would reflect updating dates and revising terminology that once referred to the land use and development regulations to the Land Development Code. The conservation and coastal management element, we created, proposed to create Objective 4.5, which is the, really the key part of this ordinance as far as satisfying the state requirements. Policies 4.5, 1 through 4.55 are the peril flood amendment language. That is language required by the state, and again, that's the sole required amendment to the comprehensive plan. Regarding the housing element, there are no key amendments, basically changes involve updating dates and converting policy language for several policies to active voice. The future land use element probably has the most changes proposed. Key elements would include, for instance, Policy 1.15, there's a table that shows the list of land use classifications and those zoning districts which are consistent with those future land use map classifications. Agricultural zoning is to be treated as existing only, so anything that's mapped agricultural may continue to be agricultural, but no new rezones to agriculture are permitted as befits a community of over 200,000 people, that's an actual municipality. Policy 1.15C, we propose to create a new table which would permit neighborhood commercial is only district which currently is only consistent with the commercial activity center to also be consistent with the commercial professional future land use map classification. What we are proposing through this is to permit residential, only through mixed-use buildings, through mixed-use development, in areas that have commercial professional future land use. This would help permit more redevelopment throughout the city, particularly in areas that are commercial corridors like Del Prado or Santa Barbara Boulevard. Policy 1.15P, deletion of the Paradise Preserve sub-district, this actually is indicative of what the state wants. This is a district that is no longer relevant, as Lee County 2020 purchased the property that was identified as the Paradise Preserve. This is why the state wants us to look at these every seven years and find those, those policies that are no longer useful and remove them. Policy 3.3 is a table of commercial corridors. We are deleting this as, 20 years ago when this table was developed, there were plans to create commercial corridor land use studies. That hasn't been undertaken since Policy 3.3, mainly through changes of management over the years. And as that policy also is not functioning as was the case when it was developed, we've seen fit to remove it. Policy 14.2, we have created and inserted a map of the downtown CRA, Transportation Concurrentity Exemption area, trying to add a little bit more imagery in our goals, objectives, and policies. For the infrastructure element, we are only changing, the only key amendment is the Policy 2.2.1, which updates the policy to include projects reflected by the city's adopted capital improvement program. In the intergovernmental coordination element, Policy 1.4, we're removing legacy language which had, which currently states, but will be removing, that the city would wait for state and federal permit approval to then issue permits. That was something that was removed actually from the state nearly a decade ago. So again, one of those were making the comp plan consistent with state law, that is the goal of this ordinance. Regarding the recreation and open space element, there was an overhaul. We proposed an overhaul of the goal, Objective 1 in Policies 1.1 and 1.2, which overhaul the park's level of service standards, how many people per basketball hoop, for instance, how many people per boat ramp, to align with national park metrics. This is the first overhaul of level of service standards since the mid-1990s. Transportation element, we're deleting Policy 1.112 and deleting additional policies due to change of priorities. Economic development element, we created a new policy designed to identify corridors for future commercial industrial development. And 6.4 is a new policy which would facilitate redevelopment of shopping centers with high vacancy rates. That is an issue that is affecting communities throughout the country. No proposed changes are made to the public school facilities element. To conclude, that is the key elements to this ordinance. Most of the changes are benign. This proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This was presented to Planning and Zoning Commission on June 1st, and the commission recommended approval. Staff recommends approval for transmittal. This would go to the state as it would if it was a, any other text amendment or large-scale land use amendment. So this will be, if approved and transmitted by council, you'd probably see this ordinance again in about two to three months. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I know, open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 57-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 57-22 for transmittal?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 56-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 56-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 19, Water and Sewer Utilities, Article 7, Water Management, Section 19-90, Irrigation Water Usage. By amending the days and times, irrigation water shall be allowed, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff.
Well, let me see if I can get it up.
So Mr. Sperry brings that up, as you recall, we had this topic of conversation at a city council, council of.
That's what I hit. There it is. Okay, thank you.
Changes to our irrigation schedules that will actually provide more opportunities for people to, more than they're allowed, spreading out the water time. So Mr. Sperry will walk through the presentation quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Council, Bill Sperry, Utilities Department, Principal Engineer, PE. I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you about this, and it's, we're amending the Section 19-9 to allow a change in the watering schedule. And as you know, our irrigation fire hydrants, we have a lot of those in the city. We have over 800 that run off the irrigation system right now. And you can see the little map on the right, the purple dots are the irrigation fire hydrants. And we need to be able to maintain pressure and flow to those fire hydrants to ensure that we've got fire protection at all times. Now, Chapter 19, Paragraph 19-9, contains the city's watering schedule. The current schedule allows 12 watering time slots with two sets of houses in each time slot. Now, the new watering schedule that is proposed will add an additional 18 slots and expand the watering time from generally 12 midnight to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And we're removing Tuesday now as a non-watering day. It's gonna be included in the, in the cycle. And by increasing to 20 watering slots, we can better manage the demand by, it'll reduce the number of customers. Right now, the average number of customers that can irrigate is around 13,400 per day per cycle, which means you've got about 28,000 customers each day in the two time slots from 12 to 4 and 4 to 8. This new schedule is gonna reduce the average number of customers from 13,400 to around a little over 8,000 per cycle, per day, or a 40% reduction, which means you're gonna get that many less people pulling off the system at any one given time. So if you look at this, the revised watering schedule, the current is on the left, where we have 12 slots, we use approximately 432 million gallons of water total in a week. And each time slot uses approximately 36 million gallons every time we water. Now, the new schedule is gonna reduce that down to where we've got a much lower average, around 8,000 people per cycle, and it's gonna reduce the water consumption considerably down to 21,600, I mean, excuse me, 21,600 gallons per cycle. We're not using less water through the week, we're just expanding it out over a longer time period where we can keep the flow and the pressure up so that it'll better serve everyone's irrigation systems. And it'll also serve the fire hydrants better, they'll stay up at a higher pressure throughout the system. And with that, if any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. I know, open up public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 56-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for approval on ordinance 56-22?
So moved.
Second.
And I'll open the floor up. Councilmember Tate?
Does this change the dates that people can water and the times, or just the times?
Yes, ma'am. It changes the dates and times.
Okay, that's a problem in the real estate industry because so many of our people are gone. And you're putting this on the, I know we have to do it, but I'm just telling you what the problems are. As far as notification, you've got six munters gone, you've got property managers that we still don't know in our database, and then we're tagging people for violations. Every time you change it, property managers have to go back out and adjust the properties they're taking care of, and then we have to notify the lawn people for the six munters. So we're going, you know, we just keep changing, and it's almost impossible for everyone to keep up that's not here. Those of us that are sitting here, we get it, but the rest of them, it's really, really hard to keep doing this. I know it makes sense, I'm just telling you what the difficulties are.
And my quick question for Mr. City Manager, what type of communication component are we going to use or utilize to address the concerns that Councilmember Tate has?
So as part of the Monday night memo, we provided our communications and marketing plan for increasing public awareness of these changes. Has everyone received that as part of the Monday night memo? And so that includes everything from social media, messaging, emails, website, newsletters, press releases, you know, pretty much all of the tools that are in our arsenal to try to get the word out. Listen, we're sensitive to the fact that we're not gonna be able to reach everybody, right? And, you know, especially those that are seasonal residents, we're gonna do our best. I think that probably the most effective tool that we have now in communicating with people in addition to social media is the monthly newsletter that we send out. Ultimately, you know, the residents have a responsibility to, seasonal residents have a responsibility to also keep informed on what's happening in their, in their community. And so we're gonna do, use every mechanism that we have available to inform people. And then always keep in mind that, you know, typically when we discover that somebody is watering their lawn outside of the approved schedule, we typically issue a warning notice first.
May I ask a question?
Councilmember Welsh, I think is next. I'll let Gloria go ahead and finish.
I just wanted to ask, how's, do we have the rental registration list going pretty well?
I'll have to turn to Mr. Cetero.
Or you can just get back to.
To see how that's going. I mean, it's been up and running now for a little less than a year.
If you, just let me know, Vince, how many you have on the list, just so I can get an idea.
Was it over 4,000?
Not now.
I think last time you told me, wasn't it like 4,500? Or did I just make that number up? All right. I probably made it up.
Okay, good. Just get back to the.
All right. Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, thank you. As I agree with the concerns that Councilwoman Tate has brought up, I don't really feel that that is a concern. This is something that's gonna fix the problem that we have, and if you're engaged in your community, the seasonal residents, I know property managers collect a fee to run the properties, so in essence, we're just asking them to do their jobs, to maintain their properties. And changing ordinance like this, I think is much better for the community than worrying about our seasonal residents irrigating at the improper time. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm completely behind this. I just have one question. Is this effective immediately?
It would be. Let's see what our city attorney put in the ordinance.
There's nothing in the ordinance.
It's usually effective upon adoption by you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So in addition, we have to rescind the stage one water shortage condition that we put into place probably two months ago now. After today, probably tomorrow, I will go ahead and issue the order to rescind that.
Okay. No further discussion. We have a motion, a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Next ordinance is 58-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 58-22, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5 million in principal amount of a note to finance the acquisition of various vehicles and equipment for the city's fire and police departments, providing for a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-ad valorem revenues to pay the principal of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the note, providing for the rights of the holder of such note, and providing severability and an effective date.
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mason is at the podium, and he'll answer questions related to this particular item and also the next item, which is, is a companion item to the ordinance that's before you. One's an ordinance and one's a resolution, so he'll answer all your questions regarding both items at the same time, and he has one presentation, if that's okay.
Surely. Mr. Mason?
Yes, I was gonna say the same thing. I have two items up and one presentation, so if that's okay with you, we'll go through this. Real quick, like, as council recall, as part of the annual budget fiscal year '22, we intended to fund on a short-term basis an estimated $2.5 million worth of police and fire vehicles. This was the sustainability vehicles and things like that that was probably a little bit more than what you would have normally seen, because we had a lot of old vehicles for police that we needed to replace that had been out there for about 10, 11 years. And so the total estimated cost of the replacements, including the two pumppers and engines as well, was about $4.5 million. But the total orders that are out there right now is $3.5 million. So we're looking at funding the $3.5 million. This doesn't include the upfitting, which is included in the budget for the vehicles, but, so we're just looking at replacing the vehicles as they stand. January 19th, this council approved a reimbursement resolution for not to exceed $5 million. So any vehicles that we've actually purchased to date will then be refunded with this debt issue. Just as a reminder, in case anybody didn't see it today, the F O, the Federal Open Market Committee had voted to increase the federal funds rate by an additional 75 basis points. Pretty sure everybody saw that. One of the nice things about this is that we locked in our rate, so we should not see any particular impact from this one. If we had not locked in the rate, I suspect that the rates would have been a little bit higher, looking at the 11 or 12 responses we got in the, the differences in the rates. This was the lowest rate, 2.63%. So the, again, on, let's see, sorry about that. So this tax-exempt environment, it certainly does continue to be favorable for us, low interest rates in the short term. 2.63% may sound like a little bit, but, you know, as little as 10, you know, eight years ago, it was probably about twice as high as that. 58, ordinance 58-22 authorizes the issuance of the note, and the resolution that follows it is actually the agreement with TD Bank for the, for them to actually give it, provide us the funding with a note. So the finance of the acquisition for the equipment authorized the debt on June 15th, which is today. Estimated issuance cost about $34,500. Loan is secured by a covenant to budget appropriate. What that means is, is that, you know, when, on an annual basis, we'll appropriate the funds to make the debt service payment out of any legally available non-ad valorem revenues. So we, overall, on the police side, we had a large number of police vehicles, Crown Victoria, Starge Chargers, one Dodge Intrepid, and Impala that was out there that had been purchased years ago, and we're replacing all of them with Ford Explorers. We have five special ops vehicles, two heavy trucks, and replacement Explorers. And so, and on the fire side, we have three expeditions that we're purchasing, one rescue truck, one pumper engine, one engine, a Ford F-150, and a Ford Escape. Overall, the actual debt issuance cost, or the actual debt will be closer to about 3.5 million, 3.52 million. The debt service schedule you see here was at 3.65. At the time we did this, we weren't sure exactly what the issuance cost was going to be. So the overall debt on a quarterly basis will be slightly less than this, at about, probably about $195,000 on a quarter. Overall, the interest is about $278,000. Again, this is very cheap money at 2.63% over a five-year period. Tonight, approve the resolution. We would do a pre-close on the 23rd, which is next Thursday, and then we close the note on the 29th, which is the following Wednesday. Here, if you have any questions on either the ordinance or the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I'll open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 58-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 58-22?
So moved.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Move on to Resolution 123-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution number 123-22, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, accepting a proposal of TD Equipment accepting a proposal of TD Equipment Finance, Inc., to provide the city with a term loan in order to finance the acquisition of various vehicles and equipment for the city's fire and police departments, approving the form of a loan agreement, authorizing the issuance of a promissory note pursuant to such loan agreement in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding five million dollars in order to evidence such loan, authorizing the repayment of such note from a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-advalorem revenues, delegating certain authority to the mayor, city manager, and other officers of the city for the authorization, execution, and delivery of the loan agreement, promissory note, and various other documents with respect thereto, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I believe staff has already given us this presentation, uh, so we'll move on to the, uh, now open the public input. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution one-twenty-three dash twenty-two? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution one-twenty-three dash twenty-two?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please read the ti- I'm sorry, please call the roll.
Cosd.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item ten B introductions, ordinance forty-four dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance forty-four dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use for property described as a tract or parcel of land situated in the state of Florida, county of Lee, city of Cape Coral, lying in section thirty, township forty-three south, range twenty-four east, being a portion of tract C dash one of Coral Lakes, as more particularly described herein. Property located at thirty-one hundred Del Prado Boulevard North, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to single-family land use for property described as lots fifteen through thirty-one and lots thirty-eight through fifty-four, block twenty-eighty-four, unit thirty-one, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at fourteen oh eight through fifteen sixteen, northeast fifteenth lane, and fourteen oh nine through fifteen seventeen, northeast fifteenth terrace, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance forty-six dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance forty-six dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral land development code by amending Article Five Development Standards, Chapter One, General Requirements for All Development, Section five point one point eight sidewalks and alleys regarding the installation of required right-of-way improvements, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral engineering design standards by adding a new page J dash four pertaining to street lighting, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-four dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-four dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use for property described as lots one through six, block eighteen forty-two, Cape Coral subdivision, unit forty-five, part one. Property located at thirty-one oh three through thirty-one eleven, southwest Santa Barbara Place, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as unit twenty-four, block ten thirty-nine, lots nine through eleven, Cape Coral subdivision, from professional to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located at twelve nineteen Academy Boulevard, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by staff or council? We'll move on to the next one. Is it fifty-nine dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk?
Sixty.
Or sixty dash twenty-two? Says fifty-nine dash twenty-two on my screen. Sixty dash twenty-two?
Sixty. Thank you.
So, Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date for ordinance sixty dash twenty-two.
Ordinance sixty dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots fifteen through seventeen, block fifty-three thirty-six, Cape Coral, unit fifty-eight, from residential single-family to commercial corridor zone. Property is located at seven oh seven southwest thirty-second court, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none. Move on to item eleven, reports. Councilmember Cosd, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the sixtieth anniversary dance and dinner of the Yacht Club Ballroom, and it was amazing. I really enjoyed it. It was a great event, um, learned a lot about the history and got to see the waltzing waters, which was really cool. And also, I want to wish a happy Pride Month to the LGBTQ community of Cape Coral. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden, report.
Yeah, it was, uh, the sixtieth anniversary of the Yacht Club was a tremendous event. It was great hearing from a, um, lady that was actually at the original opening of the Yacht Club event in nineteen sixty-two, and Gloria the second, City Clerk.
Yeah.
And, Madam City Clerk, I think I offered her a job if she ever wanted to come back and work in your office, so.
I would sure love the help.
I know, I know. Um, so, yeah, it was a great event with everybody dancing, and, uh, those of us who've seen the waltzing waters have always been big fans, and we, um, picked up a new fan of waltzing waters that night in our city manager. So we were, we were happy to see the expression on his face for that event.
Thank you. Next, uh, Councilmember Long, he's not present, so Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I too attended the Yacht Club celebration. Great job, um, to all, um, up here who participated and helped plan it. It was an absolutely beautiful event. It was really fun. Got to see some of you do the twist. Uh, that was fun. And then the roundabout, art unveiling, grateful to the CRA for all their work and assistance in making that happen and selection. Uh, I think it's a beautiful piece, and I look forward to it staying beautiful in our city for many years. And happy Pride Month and happy summer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd. Councilmember Tate.
Uh, yes, I have a couple of things. Um, Dolores, I'd like to get with you and add, if council doesn't have any objection, we seem to have another street that has semis that have decided to use it as a parking lot, and it's on Cedar Terrace and Southwest Tenth Avenue, behind a shopping center on Pine Island Road. So we have an ongoing ordinance. If, um, council would grant me that opportunity, I'd go ahead and get her the actual legal description, and that, that to our ordinance where they cannot park.
They just need a second.
Yeah, I know. I'm looking around here. Okay. Okay, then I'll get you the legal. Thank you. Also, I wanted to thank everyone, including staff and, uh, so many department heads that came to the event for the sixtieth anniversary. It was really great, and we appreciate your support. Also, I attended the CRA roundabout presentation. It was a beautiful piece of art. And finally, I'd like to ask my councilmembers to consider July thirteenth coming back a week early to have a specific budget workshop. I think, um, without going into a lecture, we're getting to be a city that can no longer do a whole month vacation. And, um, while I appreciate everybody getting the time off, I'm just wondering if, otherwise, we're going to be really, really tight, so I would like to propose, and I've talked to the city manager, and, and he agrees, that we can come back on the thirteenth specifically for a budget workshop, so I need some yes, no approval.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, so we'll open that discussion up, uh, at this point, I guess. Uh, so, what your, Mr. City Manager, how about if we hear from you as well?
Yes, as you can recall during last week's budget workshops, I think we indicated that we wanted to bring you back before we submit the proposed budget, um, because you've given us direction to make some changes to the preliminary budget in order for us to get to the proposed budget, and I think we still need to get some input and some decisions from council. I think you directed me to put together a list of, um, strategies to balance the budget in order to achieve a rollback rate, and of course, that is going to require some decision-making on council's part. Um, so we'd like to bring you in before the proposed budget needs to be submitted in August.
And that's on July thirteenth?
July thirteenth, yes.
And, uh, what, what day is that?
It's a Wednesday. It's the week before we come back.
And what time are we talking for that particular meeting?
That's up to.
That's up to you guys. I, I'm flexible, so.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll open, uh, up the floor for that discussion. Uh, that's fine with me personally, and I'm pretty flexible on the time. Councilmember Welsh.
When did we previously have, um, when were we originally going to be having this meeting? Was it on the schedule, the first budget meeting?
No, we didn't have a specific date mentioned. I think I, in my comments to you that day, I, I said that I would be coming back to you with a proposed date, um, so I didn't have anything in mind.
So when do we have to have the budget submitted?
So the proposed budget must be submitted to you prior to your first regular meeting in August. I think you are meeting August third, if I'm not mistaken, so I have to have it in, almost fi- I have to have it in final form by August third, and typically a week before then, because I got to give you time to read it, so.
Okay. Um, I understand that we gave the city manager a lot of challenges and a lot of, uh, things that he needs to go over, but, um, I mean, I've already planned everything this year according to, uh, certain timings, so I, if we want to have the meeting on the thirteenth, then I might have to check my schedule before I can agree to being present at that meeting. You know, we, 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 yeah, that's it.
Councilmember Shepherd.
I'm fine anytime after twelve o'clock.
Councilmember Hayden.
Problem with that date, I've got family in town, something that's already been set up, so, um, that would, that would be an issue for me to try and come in that day.
Councilmember Cosd.
Given that there's already two that can't make it work, um, could we look at that next week, the week where we have? I know we have a meeting on the twentieth, but what about a different day that week? Since we're all back from wherever we're going on hiatus.
How about, if you're coming back on the twentieth, can we get you here, let's say, maybe nine or ten AM? And then in the morning, we do a budget workshop, um, or actually, wait a second. How about we do budget workshop from, let's say, one o'clock to four? And then we have your regular meeting at four-thirty?
I would prefer to come in early. I'm, I'm dedicated to be here on the twentieth the whole day anyway, so I would prefer to have the meeting at any time on the twentieth.
Alternatively, we could have a budget workshop in the morning, nine, ten AM. Work through that, and then you guys have a break between the budget workshop and the, uh, regular meeting at four-thirty.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Maybe start at ten, and that gives us till one, two o'clock, and it gives us a little bit of a break in between. I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm better after twelve o'clock.
I'm good.
All right. All right, uh.
Happy Pride Month, and that's it. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk.
I just wanted to add that on July twentieth at nine, you do have a scheduled CTEC meeting.
Okay.
From nine, and they usually last up to two to three hours.
Yep.
So, uh, what's your recommendation, uh, Mr. City Manager, one o'clock?
After twelve.
One o'clock works.
Okay. One o'clock on, uh, July twentieth, which is a Wednesday, uh, do we need to have a motion for that? Madam City Attorney.
You can either do a motion, or you can, as long as there's no objection, you can go forward with that one.
Consensus. Okay. I think we have that consensus.
In council chambers?
Yeah, in council chambers here at one o'clock.
Thank you.
And, uh, since we're on that topic of discussion, um, and I know we have a lot of things on our plate, uh, Mr. City Manager, one of the concerns that I have, uh, and we may not be able to address it this year, but surely next year, uh, committee at the whole meeting, uh, you know, the last one we have was on May twenty-fifth. The next one's September, uh, fourteenth, which is almost four months. Uh, to me, that's a, a long time. I know we have budget discussions, but we have other agenda items or discussions, uh, within our city, just not with budget. Um, so, like I said, I know we have a lot on our plate, but I think for next year, for sure, uh, or if you feel that we have a, a need to have a committee at the whole meeting, uh, prior to that September fourteenth, uh, I think that's a big timeframe, four months, not to have a, a discussion on general topics, uh, within our, within our city. I know we got a lot going on.
So, Mr. Mayor, as you know, this year, we've implemented a, a new budget schedule that actually moves a lot of the work towards the front end, which is good. In theory, if we get this next budget workshop resolved to the point where we are able to submit a proposed budget that takes into account all of the direction that you've given us, then we don't need to reserve the entire month of August for budget workshops, right? Because we would have done all the work on the front end, not after the budget is formally submitted to you. So again, I would argue that you could have now, we can, the whole month of August is now back in play for regular cow meetings. Um, our work will be done once we submit the proposed budget to you, and then the only other steps that you're going to have to take is the actual, um, public hearings that you must do in September. So again, that's why we're pressing really hard to get the budget as close to perfect. When we submit it to you in August, your work has already been done.
Okay, it sounds like a plan, and, uh, we can always, uh, address that, uh, sometime at the end of July, beginning of August, uh, if it looks like that we're, we're moving forward in that fashion, and then that would free up a day possibly. We could have a committee of the whole. Uh, Councilmember Hayden.
Mr. City Manager, just to clarify, because two of those budgets, those three budget, um, workshops that are now scheduled in Au- in August include the Budget Review Committee, so we're still going to need to give, you know, have that opportunity to, uh, share their input on the budget. That, that's got to be a consideration, um, as we move forward with this.
Okay. Um, was that it? Councilmember Tate?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Welsh, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one quick thing before my report. We just did the Cape Competes, um, members, which now we have the ability to have a quorum. Uh, do we want to pick a liaison for the Cape Competes, or do we want to wait until we have the days and times of that meeting? Because as I stated earlier, I'm willing to be the liaison for that, so I don't know if.
Yeah, I think probably wait till we get the dates and times, everything established, and maybe that's something that, uh, Madam, uh, City Clerk could put on our first meeting back.
Yeah, meeting when we get back. I know they probably won't have it by then. Other than that, I, uh, attended the, the Yacht Club Ballroom event. It was great. I also attended the reveal of the art piece at the roundabout, and I'm happy to see all the work, uh, and art and stuff we've been doing in the CRA district. Uh, I think it's a perfect part of town for that. And, uh, finally, even though I don't see him in the room, I'm sure he's probably still listening, I wanted to give a special congratulations, uh, to our new Public Works Director, Mike Ulchism. He no longer has to say interim in front of his name every time he speaks, so I know that'll probably save him quite a few words, because he's up here, uh, quite a bit, uh, talking, so I wanted to congratulate him on, uh, getting the promotion to that position. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll try to be fairly quick here. I attended the ninetieth Annual U.S. Conference of Mayors event in Reno, June second through June seventh. I won't get into it tonight, all the great seminars that I went to, but I will bring it up at a future meeting. Also, I attended, on the eighth of June, attended the unveiling of the roundabout sculpture down in the downtown Cape. On June the ninth, I attended the Cape Coral Construction Industry June Networking Event, and on June tenth, I attended with several council members the Yacht Club sixtieth anniversary dinner and dance party. It was a great event, whoever put all that on did a fabulous job. And also, on June eleventh, I attended and participated in the Women of Distinction Awards. Also, one other thing I wanted to mention real quickly, I received a email of an organization here in Cape Coral, and I'll read you the email sharing great news about our local youth baseball team. The Cape Coral Crush, eight U baseball team with the United States Specialty Sports Association, now has the all-time winning team record in their organizational history. This past weekend, the team broke the previous held fifty-five wins and one season record. They actually still have two more World Series events left this seizing, season, and one of which that's, is in Sarasota next week. Their current record is fifty-eight, thirteen, and one, so I just wanted to give a congratulations to that particular team and that organization for breaking that milestone. And that's all I have. Madam City Attorney, report?
I have no report.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make it really, really brief. For those of you that don't know, the United Way of Lee, Henry, and Glades Counties met its fundraising goal for this year, a goal of just slightly more than eleven point one million dollars. It's the twenty-ninth consecutive year that the United Way has, of this area, has been able to meet or exceed its, its goal. Our employees played a small part in contributing to that. You know, it's hard to believe that just two years ago, our employees generated just slightly over, or donated just slightly over eleven thousand dollars. Last year, we made it an effort to get more participation from our employees, and then we more than doubled that to almost thirty thousand dollars. It was just shy of twenty-nine thousand. This year, we decided to add a, a new weapon, a new tool to our arsenal to entice more participation from our employees, and we asked our city clerk, Kimberly Brunns, to co-chair our, our campaign this year for our employees, and as a result of her leadership and teamwork with Wendy Hawk in our finance department, our employees contributed more than thirty-six thousand dollars this year.
Good job. Yay.
So, definitely want to thank her for that. Of course, we held a variety of events throughout the year to include Councilmember Nelson's famous Taco Tuesday event where we ate a lot of tacos that day. And so, we're looking for next year's campaign, and we've established a forty thousand dollar goal for next year, and we have, we're confident that Kimberly and her arm twisting will exceed that goal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great job.
Yep. Great job, Kimberly and all the staff. That's definitely great to hear. All right. Time and place of future meetings, we have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, beginning at four-thirty PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.